Let me see, roll call will show that four out of five are here. Barbara Kohler is not here tonight. And everybody else is. And so do I have an approval of agenda? An affidavit?
So move it.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, Winesoff, second Bragman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. And so we had a closed session before this and we gave direction to staff and council and have nothing else to report out of the closed session. Meeting protocol, mayor shall maintain order at meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, the staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. We will review the agenda at 10 o'clock to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council decides, votes to suspend this rule. Please turn off all cell phones or put them in silent mode at this time. And so first up, we have interview and appointments of various candidates. And the first one, as you can see from artwork here, is for Fairfax Artists and Residencies for a one-year term. So we have an applicant here, or applicants? Yes, sir?
Push this button, or is it already on?
You push the button, one time. There you go.
Hi, my name is Matt Tausley. I'm applying for the Artisan Residency Program for the Parks and Recreation Department. I've been through two interviews already and I have brought my artwork to show and I got a couple other things. You've already read my resume, I suspect. And let's see. I am a Marin native. I was born in Marin General Hospital in 1960 and then I went to Ross School, elementary school, and then I went on to Katherine Branson Mounttown Pious School, graduated there in 1978. And then I went on to a small Ivy League college in Brunswick, Maine, graduated with high honors there and with a BA and Bachelor in Arts. And then I went to Yale Summer School of Music and Arts for summer and graduated from there. And then I went on to University of California, Santa Barbara, and graduated with a Master of Fine Arts there. And so I'm an artist and I really enjoy making paintings and I enjoy teaching and I've had a lot of experience teaching. What you see here is examples of my artwork. I would just point out one piece right here with the flowers. That's a garden. I have had a garden in the Fairfax Community Garden for 12 years now. I've been a resident of Fairfax for 12 years now, living in Creekside Apartments, which is a painting right here I did for their office. I also did, I work for a community-based organization called CAM, Community Action Marin, which is a human health and wellness group, and I work for them in a nine-to-five job. And I help, I drive around on a team and we help homeless people that are mentally ill off the streets and help them find resources. So that's my job, what I do now. I would find time to be able to do my painting, teaching to children, hopefully during the week, two days during the week and on the weekend. I can teach painting to any type of people, from any age, from children to older-aged people, any type of people. And the children actually like to paint their own paintings. They go at it. I give them the materials and they paint the paintings. They're very brave and I love to see them focus and pay attention and they just do their own thing and they have a good time doing it. I've never seen a child not be able to really enjoy painting when they do it. So that's what those two boards are there. I created my own school in Pickleweed Park in the canal and I did that for a year and that was very successful. And I just put out the paints and the children painted and they had a really good time until they got too much paint on their clothes and their mothers decided that they couldn't do it anymore. So we'll just have to have the kids dress up in their, you know, in their undressed clothes. And so then, let's see, I can do, I can teach people how to paint portraits. I paint animals. I paint just about anything. And I can, I teach fast and I paint fast. And I could have somebody, you know, teach somebody at advanced or beginners, advanced level, how to paint, let's say, a rose and we could do that. So that would be, one of my projects I would like to do would be to have an art school and I would also have people painting murals. We've already talked about this with Michelle and the rest of the people with Mary on Focus. I'd be working with her. And I realize I'm just going to be a volunteer and I'm going to be getting $400, which is a very minimal amount of money, but I would use that and the Pavilion Studio to paint paintings of my own and to invite people into my studio and show what I've been painting and/or let other people use the studio to paint there, too. And so then I would like to, to paint murals in the town. We would have, I'd like to see a bunch of kids get out there, maybe 20 kids at a time, painting a mural. We'd have weekend, weekend programs where we could all get together with Mary's Focus Program, work as a team with all those people and paint murals on the walls by the ballfields. And there's another wall by the, right here, by the lumber shop. And that mural seems to have been faded. I'd like to paint over that if, you know, we would go into that. But many ideas, I have many ideas for what we could do and I'm very excited about this. I've met a lot of people. I've gone through two interviews, like I said. And I would like to work, you know, as a team with people and I realize I have a little problem. I like to direct things a lot. I like to, you know, you know, get things started and move things and motivate people and do all that kind of stuff, but I realized that I would be working with a team and so I'd be very excited about doing that. And it is summertime, so the thing about having the, we would just paint, get a few people painting out here at the Recreation Center. And I know people just walking by. This is how I organized this thing at Pickleweed Park. They would just walk by and I said, "Come on in, paint." And the kids would just drop in, they'd get on a stool and they'd paint and then before you know it, you had all the children painting.
Okay. So, thanks. I guess we've got a pretty good idea of thing.
Okay.
Yeah. One thing to keep in mind is a lot of these murals are, a lot of people in the community have worked on them. For instance, the one on Merwin, I know they go back and fix it up every year and it changes and evolves, but it doesn't necessarily just get painted over at that point. So it's, I would, you know, were you to be given this thing, I think it would be really important to keep in mind that you need to work with the community rather than direct, you know, direct them to do your vision.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
That's what I've been, what I was trying to explain, that I'd be working closely with Mary and under her supervision and working with her and not taking over and letting her tell me. She did say there was an empty wall by the park field that we could paint a mural on.
Sure. That one's been redone periodically, yeah.
Seeing as we have a full agenda, love the pick. And I would move that on the recommendation of the Park and Rec Commission, that we examine Tausley.
Hey, let's discuss this first.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think Renee had something to say.
Yeah. First of all, thank you so much. You sound like you have given tremendous amount of time to art and to the communities you've worked in and that's quite commendable. I just needed to bring up that there are two other applications, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just didn't know if anyone else was here to represent themselves or if we should represent who's submitted their application, just in fairness. Is there another applicant here?
Well, actually, what we did was, because it's recommended by, was recommended by Park, we just asked the one selected applicant to be here, to be interviewed by the council. We invite the others.
So do the others withdraw their applications?
No. They, it was one of the things where it's recommended, so typically, I think the practice was we just send the one, selected one to the council.
I guess that's the joy of me having no history, is that I just see three wonderful applicants. And so I don't completely feel comfortable at this point, just disregarding that, just having read the packet and seeing these other applications. Is that, is that an okay thing to say?
Probably is, yeah.
So just, so staff just needs direction and so we know in the future is that if there's a recommendation made by, say, Park related to Artisan Residences, you still would like all three candidates to be present and interviewed by the council, or just present?
What do you say?
I would imagine only if they want to. But that's kind of where you're going on something later in the agenda, isn't it? About how these things, discussion and consideration with the process of filling vacancies on boards and commissions. And so that conversation about how we go about that. But in this case, this was, it says on the top, recommendation front, so that's why I made the motion, since they recommended this applicant for approval.
Yeah. And, yeah, I guess in terms of, for me, I mean, we have all three of these here at the same time. On other things, if we're picking who it is, I mean, if it's Parks and Rec, picking who the Artisan Residents would be, then I would think it would be Parks and Rec. But if we're picking it, then maybe we should be picking from the three applicants that are here, if you under-
But that's the interesting part, is that we seem to have ceded this boards and commission recommendation policy to, outside of the Planning Commission, to the-
To the committees.
Yeah, I don't think Open Space does that either. But it seems here and in the Volunteer Committee, they make recommendations and then obviously if we disagree with them. But if we don't disagree with them, we don't, we don't seem to drag everybody in here to have a conversation. We take their recommendation.
Will?
So, for the sake of, you know, running the other direction, I feel as though in this situation, I would like to have heard from the other two applicants. So seeming that they have a great amount of passion for what it is they could bring to the role as well.
So if the council's wish, yes, we can defer this to the next meeting in July and then ask the other two applicants if they'd like to attend. Although it'd be good, from staff's perspective, when we ask them to attend, are they going to be thinking, be interviewed or just be there in case there's questions or if they want to say something?
Well, I mean, I think we have an extensive amount of materials. I thought we would be making a decision from the three applicants. That is what I thought. I understood the recommendation from staff. If I'm breaking protocols, then please, you know, let me know. But I just, I thought these were three excellent candidates and I really appreciated your presentation. But I think this is a really important role. It's quite a face to our community and it enrolls lots of people in the creativity of the community, so I think it's worth consideration.
Yeah. I mean, I think there is, you know, Artisan Residences is an important part. I mean, Frank Gonzalez kind of started as, I don't know if he was the first, he was the first one that I knew, I guess '91 or '92 or something like that. He was Artisan Residencies. And it's a good community-building thing and people work together on murals and they, you know, various different artists and residents have brought their own flavor to what they've done and how they've built art in the community. And sometimes it's just with kids and sometimes it's just doing very public things. So it really depends on the individual, on what they bring to it. But I think it's, it's an important thing and if we're being asked to decide, to answer your question, Renee, I don't know that it's breaking with protocol and that, you know, I think that basically we've interviewed the various applicants here for other posts in the past.
I think we have-
Do you have thoughts? Larry?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know if there's been an established protocol or not. I don't remember the appointment of Shoshana, the first one, in 2006. It's, I have a recollection that we did interview folks for it. So, you know, it, it might be a good idea to defer making a decision until next month.
Yeah, I would disagree with that. We have a policy, obviously, the, the Park and Rec made a recommendation, it seems to be an excellent recommendation. He arrived here today, consistent with how we've done things in the past and certainly how Park and Rec believes after also interviewing all the three excellent candidates. And I would say, since this is a one-year appointment traditionally, that we make the appointment this evening, consistent with what's presented in front of us. And when we revisit this between now and next year, we can set up any new policy, but in deference to and in respect to the candidate who appeared before us this evening, I would go forward with my motion and ask that we appoint him.
So with all due respect, I disagree in that we do have these three candidates. I think they'd each be willing to represent themselves in a brief and concise way. And I do truly respect that you've bid, that you've, that you've come. And I hope there's, I forgive the confusion. But I would feel, I would feel comfortable doing that and, you know, my appointment is a short appointment and I would love to see something happen that may be in a slightly different track.
It's okay.
Okay. Well, is there a second to David's motion?
There is.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to continue?
So I would move to continue this to the next meeting.
Second. Okay, so motion and second?
No.
I, well, David, you're voting against? I would vote to continue. Would you?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll see you next month?
Thank you very much for paying, for respecting me and paying attention to my time and your energy for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll see you next month.
Thank you. See you next month?
Okay.
Okay, great.
If you don't mind, I'm going to take my pictures down. I don't want to bother the rest of the operation here and so I'll just take the pictures down quietly and move out.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have interview and appointment of a candidate to serve on the Chittasloe Committee. Or is it Chittasloe Committee? I'm never sure.
Chitta.
Chittasloe, it's Italian, so.
My name is-
Okay. Press the button on the bottom of the microphone stand there and it'll turn it on for you.
I think it's turned off.
Nope.
Okay.
Now it's on.
Anybody should know.
I never stand in front of these things. My name is Barbara Kate. Hello, David, John, Larry, welcome, Renee.
Thank you.
By my last name, you already know who I am. My husband was a former city manager here. I am very interested on being appointed to this committee. I think it is a worldwide movement and we already have a committee in place here and it needs to continue. Pam was the liaison from the council to the committee and she was hoping that Barbara Kohler would be here and appointed. She's emailed me this. Chittasloe is worldwide movement. We already have three cities, small ones, and it only applies to small cities in California, Sonoma being the first, Sebastopol and Fairfax next. Pam and I have been to two of those committee meetings, one maybe in April and one last year, and I committed to it at that time. So actually, the Chittasloe USA people already think I'm on your committee. However, I've not been appointed, so I need to be appointed and I'm not sure, according to Michelle, is anyone else applied for this. So in due respect, it's, it's a committee and a theme and a process that is so Fairfax that I can't even tell you what it is because it encompasses sustainable Fairfax or the thing going out, the, the farmer's market tonight, all the slowing, all the chicken coops, all the bees, you name it, we are already there. And I'd like to be a part of this because it is something that is international. The Good Earth has already taken the logo, which is the snail, and made a lovely sculpture that's out on their lunchtime patio. They've already adopted it. So I hope that the city will continue to pay the fees, continue to have the committee, to continue to be part of the statewide movement and the international movement and the US movement. We right now have four cities, small cities, in Vermont, New Hampshire, and maybe Maine that have applied to the US, to the slow committee, to continue. So I would be proud to be a part of that movement, to have anyone traveling internationally, statewide, US-wide, to see that logo, the snail, and come here to be a part of that movement and that feeling that embodies Fairfax. Thank you.
Will?
Hey, where you going?
Thank you. I gather, do you have a question for Barbara?
No, Barbara.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for applying and I'll take another swipe at seeing if I can get somebody appointed. I would move to appoint the incredibly qualified Barbara Caden. As they used to say of the Clintons, maybe we get a two-for-one and bring Mr. Kate back into the fold of attention to who's in fact. And with that, I would move Barbara for the, for the committee.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion before this? Okay. Well, then, is there a second? Okay, so we have a motion, Winesoff, second Bragman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous, so. Welcome.
I'd like to stay a little longer to watch the meetings.
You're welcome to stay as, yeah, as long as you like. Okay. We also have an interview and appointment for a candidate to serve on the Open Space Committee for a full four-year term. And I think we have a couple of-
One.
Just one?
Yeah.
I thought there was two.
Two for the Marin Commission on Aging.
Yeah.
Ah, you're right, that's what it was. Okay. So that's Ray Burgala. Is he here?
And Jody Timms.
That's for aging.
That's for the Commission on Aging, so, well, Ray's not here. So why don't we continue this to next month? Because ordinarily, if somebody's already sitting on a committee and they're not here, they, they know what the deal is and the rest of the committee knows of them pretty well. But, but if somebody generally doesn't show, then we say, well, maybe they're not as interested. But I'd like to continue it just to give them another chance to come. Does that make sense?
Maybe he was insulted, but we just put three L's in his name.
I, yeah, I can't speak to that. Okay, so in that case, let's move on to the Marin Commission on Aging, which I do believe we have Jody Timms here, right? Okay, why don't you come forward to the microphone and briefly state who you are and why you would like to be on the Commission on Aging.
Good evening. I'm Jody Timms. I've lived in Fairfax for 21 years and I'm interested in serving on the Commission for Aging, Commission on Aging. Currently, I work full-time as a social worker in Mill Valley for the Redwoods. I've been working with seniors for the last three years in a number of capacities as a hospice volunteer, also West Marin Care Manager, and now at the Redwoods. So I go to Commission on Aging meetings on a pretty regular basis, primarily the public event part, where they give wonderful presentations and talks that are a big help to both seniors and support staff for seniors. And I'd be really happy and proud to represent the Fairfax residents on the commission, be a liaison between our town, our residents, and the county commission. So, there we go.
Sounds like a pretty good, pretty good idea on what's involved and what you're getting into here, so. Are there any questions from other council members?
Thank you, Jody. We would be, we would be more than lucky to have Jody fill this position and I feel honored that you want to step up to do this. I can't think of anyone with more breadth of experience and I've worked with Jody in several different capacities and we will, we will make life better for everyone if we have Jody play this role, fill the seat. That would be great.
Okay, good question. You actually said something that's of great concern to me. I live on a street with a number of seniors, so I've been sort of watching this over the last 17 years as they've grown older in place and how they're working through the progress of their lives. We, as you know, more than anyone probably in the room, are growing grayer, particularly even as I sit here, I'm growing grayer. And I would, if it would not be terribly taxing at, on your schedule and when it's convenient for you, to come and talk to us as often as you wish about the issues of the graying of our county, the graying of our town. And particularly, if you have things that you think that we as a council and as a town should be doing, we're sort of on the, you know, we're in the 50-year-old range around here, we need more expertise, we need more information about what we should do. And I wouldn't assume if I were you that I'd say, "Well, they must know about that." I certainly don't. And I would like us to promote more programs for seniors, to deal with access issues for seniors. I know many seniors have issues with regard to our infrastructure and the hazards that it pose, that they pose. And is there innovative and interesting ways that even on our small and limited budget that we can make life more attractive to them and offer them the opportunity to come downtown perhaps more often than they do? And I could go on and on about this. It's an issue of particular concern and I would ask you, please, come to us and talk to us about what we should be doing in your opinion.
I'd be happy to. I work day in and day out with seniors all around me, walkers, wheelchairs, you know, getting about. And I would love to see more seniors out and about in Fairfax, more things that make that accessible. I'd love to see maybe a fair or some small, a table at the farmer's market or a small seniors fair. There's a big one on the county level every year, but there are a lot of services or a number of services for seniors that I think in Fairfax, they could really take advantage of. For instance, catch-a-ride transportation, meals, et cetera. So to, to be able to educate our residents about, and the council, about what's out there and what's available and to make, bring on more public appearance and face and respect for our seniors would be really important for me. I'd be happy to come and report on the work of the commission and whatever suggestions I might have.
Yes, it's that last one. Come to us and say, "You should be doing this."
Okay.
Please.
Sure.
Reason, yeah. Okay. Great. If there's no other comments or questions from council?
You should make it.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion.
I would very much like to, to, what's the word?
No, yeah.
Move approval?
I would very much like to move approval of Jody Timms to the Commission on Aging.
Second. Okay, so we have a, a motion from Renee, second from Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it passes unanimously, so welcome.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And looking forward to hearing back and seeing things improve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we have Affordable Housing Committee, interview and appointment of a candidate for the Affordable Housing Committee. And I think we just have Scott Huckstrasser. Right? Welcome, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Scott Huckstrasser.
I'm Scott Huxtrusser. I'm a third-generation native Californian. I've lived in Fairfax for 27 years. That's who I am. What I do, I'm a professional land use planner. I have a bachelor's degree in geography and land economics, a master's in environmental planning. I'm actually a recipient of affordable housing development in Marin County as an affordable housing builder for a sweat equity project that brought me to this town and my family when we built nine houses in 10 months on Glen Drive. So I think I'm qualified for this position for basically three reasons, and that's why I'm here. One, I have an education background. Two, I actually teach as an adjunct professor at the Graduate School of the University of Iowa about affordable housing. And third, I know how to connect the dots, how to put the vision, the policy, and the construction and development of housing together to make clean, affordable, sustainable places for people to live. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
I've got a question. Are you, Scott, are you familiar with the two sites that have been under consideration for affordable housing?
I am indeed. Yes, I'm familiar with your general plan.
And so have you done any planning on those sites?
I have not.
Okay. So as far as any conflicts, those two sites don't present any conflicts to you, their location, anything like that?
No, they do not.
Okay. It would be interesting to have you in our group, I think, so. Are there any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, and, yes, knowing you for a little bit on other committees too, I think you're well-spoken and...
I'll move approval for Scott Huxtrusser to join us and join our Affordable Housing Committee for the unexpired term.
I will second.
Okay. So we have a motion winds off, second, Gudard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, so welcome. Okay, so we can move on to announcements. Fairfax Food Pantry is every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at Fairfax Community Church. They need volunteers, or if you know somebody who needs food, it's a good place to get a bag of groceries. Every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church, and their volunteers need it to help set up, take down, do various things. It's a good thing to be doing. There is one, no longer one vacancy on the Affordable Housing Commission for a full four-year term. There are two vacancies on the Open Space Committee, one for a full four-year term and one unexpired term, which is three years. There is one vacancy on the Planning Commission for an unexpired term to February 29th, 2016. There is no longer a vacancy on the Commission on Aging. The Fairfax Festival, in case anybody doesn't know it, is going to be this coming weekend, the 8th and 9th. The parade starts at 10:00, and it should be a lot of fun. The hot weather's going to move in again, so it should be Fairfax Festival. Yeah. Give Back Tuesday, June 18th, which is a week from next Tuesday, I believe, is for Fairfax Open Space Committee Annual Fundraiser, and that's at Iron Springs Pub and Brewery, which is 765 Center Boulevard in Fairfax. And basically, you can go there, enjoy dinner or whatever, and a portion of the proceeds, I forget what it is, the profits, 10%? Okay, goes to support the Open Space Committee, and they are tracing, trying to raise money for, in particular, a piece of property that can connect up with a bunch of open space. So it's a good thing. So just see you that Tuesday. Next, we have reports...
Could I mention one other thing? On Friday night, there's going to be a movie in the park at the Ball Field called Chasing Ice, which is a fairly recent movie. It's supposed to be an incredible movie. National Geographic photographers did a one-year chronology in, I think Greenland, showing the receding glaciers over a period of one year. So considering, we just got the announcement that we're over 400 parts per million of CO2 now this year. It was on page four of the Chronicle, highest, highest level of CO2 in something like 3 million years. It made page four of the Chronicle. It's a, it's a very important film, and so if anybody's interested, it's 8:00 this Friday at the Ball Field. Thanks.
On page four or something? One of the New York Times. What are they, what are they thinking of it?
And where was it in the IJ?
Right.
Wasn't anywhere in the IJ, I think.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see it. But, okay, so that's also coming up this Friday and is kicking off the festival, starting out that Friday. So the next thing, we have a presentation from the Fairbuck Committee. And so I see a couple of people from that committee in the audience, so please come forward. I kind of know what it is because I'm on this committee, so.
Don't spoil it.
I won't spoil it.
Hey there. Thanks for the time. So we're here on behalf of the Fairbuck Board, Kiki Laporta, David Bernard, myself, of course, John's a member of that board also, and Merrill from Sustainable Fairfax are the board. We're here to present a check for the repayment of the startup loan that you guys gave us. But I want to take the opportunity just to give you a little bit of a report of the success of this project, because you helped something very substantial to happen, and we want you to know what has happened over the last two and a half years. So just got some notes of the highlights. So the Fairbuck's in its third year. And we've done two mintings of the Fairbuck. We've sold $18,000 worth of $3 Fairbuck tokens. So that's 6,000 tokens in circulation. There's 40-plus downtown businesses that have taken the Fairbuck. And this past year, we realized two of our big goals. One is to pay off all of our loans. You know, we had three startup loans, one from the Chamber of Commerce, one from you guys as the town, and one from Sustainable Fairfax. So with this loan payoff, we're paying off all of the loans for the startup of the project. We have reached the point of being able to give community grants based on the funds that have been raised by the Fairbuck. So we've now given five grants to local projects, the Downtown Mosaic, the Streets for People, the Fairfax Community Wellness Center, the Fairfax Santa Soma Children's Center. And our most recent grant is for the Permaculture Garden outside here at the Women's Club. These are small grants, $500 to $1,000, but they're grants, and they're raised from just local business activity. So we've done that. We have a solid reserve still in the bank. We have a community project fund that's active. We're taking applications for local nonprofit grants. And we still have a lot of tokens that we can continue to sell. We're going to have a presence at the Fairfax Festival coming up this weekend. Other successes, we had a lot of great press coverage, as you probably know, front page of the Chronicle, front page of the IJ. We had a story in the Wall Street Journal about Fairfax's local currency. We've been on a couple of different TV stations, and we've gotten a lot of inquiries from other towns interested in doing local currencies. So we have really become an example and helped to kind of show what can be done. We have a paid admin who's paid in Fairbucks that responds to businesses through a hotline. And if you do the math on 6,000 tokens in circulation, you know, an average dollar bill changes hands about twice a week, and local currencies often travel faster than national currencies. So if you, if you do the math on 6,000 tokens, that adds up to hundreds of thousands of Fairbuck transactions that happen every year. Of course, we know a lot of those Fairbucks are probably sitting in someone's couch or in their collection, or have been sent back to Ohio with a tourist and are not in circulation. But that's all fine, too, because everybody's hearing about Fairfax and what a wonderful place this is. There's also a lot of kids out there now getting their allowance in Fairbucks because they can only spend them at one of our local businesses. And there's a lot of transactions that are being sparked. You know, hundreds of thousands of times a Fairbuck has changed hands. A lot of those are local business transactions that have included dollars as well and brought, brought business to our local businesses. Also, I'd say one of the biggest benefits of the Fairbuck has been the actual Fairbuck Board. Because it's made up of representatives of the town, Sustainable Fairfax, the Chamber, the public, and the startup board, it's been a great place for those, for information to travel between those bodies. And so actually, it's somewhere that a lot, a lot of good things have happened just because of bringing those organizations together. So we want to thank you guys. We particularly want to thank John for having sponsored this originally on the, on the town council. We want to thank Pam, who's, you know, been one of the spearheaders of the project. And we want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Sustainable Fairfax, who also helped it to happen, and the dozens of volunteers who have been out there for more than two and a half years, spreading the word about the benefits of local currency. And so we have this check. Is, was there anything you guys would like to add to that?
I just wanted to say, just really, Matthew already mentioned it, but there's three real key individuals, John, Pam, and Matthew, that really have carried this forward and really put in the hours and had the passion and see it through. So really, a great thanks to those three individuals, particularly, among many other volunteers. But those three, three really stood out.
Including yourself, I'd say.
David, do you want to add anything?
I'm the newest member of the board and just really honored to participate and have big shoes to fill. So thank you for your support.
Yes, and thanks for paying back the loan on time, too. I mean, this, it's, it's, local currency is, it's a, it opens the conversation about why it's important to spend your money locally. It keeps, every time money changes hands, somebody benefits. And a local currency really brings that home as to the reason why. And as, you know, the way the U.S. Treasury sees this is a mercantile token, so it actually, it causes transactions to happen that don't ordinarily happen, too. So it's, ah, you're on candid camera here.
Did you, did you want to take a picture of the group actually accepting a check?
Yeah, let's do that.
Matthew? Matthew, can I just call you back up for just one minute? I actually had a couple of questions that I think that maybe, you know, other members of the public or the people watching at home may have.
Sure.
And that is, have you guys noticed any, the changes between sort of the activity in using the Fairbuck in the first year and now where we're at in the third year? And also, any feedback you're getting from businesses? And are people still sort of fired up and passionate about it like they were in the start? Or, so give us a little update.
Yeah. Well, you know, we still have good activity from some of our larger businesses. I mean, Good Earth is still regularly redeeming and, and buying tokens, as well as the lumber store and, and maybe in the scoop and some of the other busier businesses. I think just within the last year, we have started to give grants in the Fairbucks. So I think, you know, the first year, we had maybe more business activity. But I think now with the advent of community grants, they're actually, and some of the grants, the grants are given half cash, half Fairbucks. And so that's actually creating a new way for Fairbucks to get out into circulation, as well as making connections between the projects and the local businesses. So that's, you know, showing some, some additional activity there. And, you know, it tends to be cyclic around the festival, because the festival is where we get a lot of tokens out into the hands of people. So usually, there's kind of like a boom right after the festivals or the big events, and then in the wintertime is kind of a die-down. But overall, you know, we've had pretty steady flow and good participation on the board throughout the two and a half years, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks.
Could I just, could I just mention one thing? The, the money that we funded it with was actually from a special fund that we developed from the interest we got for lending money to the Marin Energy Authority, right when it was starting up. They, they were having a lot of financial problems. And Fairfax committed, I think, $100,000. And with the interest we earned, they also paid their loan off. So that was another investment we made in, in sort of a forward-thinking organization that is now really, has really taken off. So just the direction I'd like to see the money go that you're depositing is that it go back into that account, because we kind of set it aside. I don't know if we've got it on the books or not, but we kind of set it aside as a special investment fund for special projects. So you are, in effect, refinancing more innovation in the community by paying it back. And so it's, it's really appreciated.
That's excellent. Wonderful. And I think that, you know, we'd also like to offer you guys, if there's a special project, a nonprofit project that you want to give a grant to, we could, from the Fairbuck Board, now give additional grant money to something that was perhaps named by the town council, as we've done for the Chamber. So maybe we can even give back even more than was given to us.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. And I guess if other council members have an idea for some special project? Got a couple kicking around in the back of my mind, but I will let them percolate a little bit, give others a chance. So thank you very much. Next, we have the General Plan Implementation Committee Quarterly Report.
Mr. Mayor, can we continue that item to July?
Okay. And I gather the presenter is not here, and so let's continue that until July. Presentation by Marin Municipal Water District and the Water Storage Improvement Project. And...
Thank you. My name is Carl Gowen. I'm a senior engineer with Marin Municipal Water District and the Planning Group as part of the Environmental Engineering Services. We have Director Cruz here tonight, also Libby Pachel of our publicity, and John Lahey, who is our principal engineer. We have a presentation to tell you about our upcoming water improvement project, Water Storage Improvement Project. How many of you used water today? Everyone, yes. We are here to supply water to our customers. And so I'm here to tell you about the most recent project we have, a large water storage improvement project, 8 million gallons on, on a number of tanks. Why do we need the project? We need it for operational and storage needs. Operationally, we need about 4 million gallons of water to take care of the cycle in the day for the demand. We also need 4 million gallons for the emergency storage in the system. This is for when the pumps go out, or the treatment plants go down, or we have a main break. And with that, we need the storage to cover those emergencies. Seismic reliability, the systems which we're replacing were designed in the early 1900s. The ones we'll be in, putting in place are, of course, the current standards, current building codes, current requirements for American Waterworks Association. And also, it's going to be along the main trunk line that we just installed on Concrete Pipe Road. So that was part of our seismic upgrade for the Fireflow Plan. Replace outdated facilities. The facilities we have are under a prior era. For example, the tunnel is being used as a storage facility. The concrete tank was simply a hole that was dug in the ground and then concrete placed on the soil to allow the storage of water. And we'll be providing reliable drinking water when we're done here. We'll have the ability to redundantly supply at least half of our customers off of these tanks. So this shows how our daily demand varies within the system. We have two peaks during the day. We have a peak in the morning. Everybody gets up, starts taking their shower, and that's required of storage. We have a peak also in the afternoon. So those two... that's required of storage. We have a peak also in the afternoon. So those two times we're drawing on our storage. And that combined, for this particular part of the system, is about four million gallons a day. Where is the project located? Project's located along Concrete Pipe Road. And Concrete Pipe Road is the new transmission line that we just put in, 15,000 feet. It runs from Fairfax-Belenus Road to Ross Valley Tanks. And the two tanks that we're replacing are the two places where we have current storage that we're actually putting in new storage for. Number one is the Pine Mountain Tunnel, which presently has three million gallons and is an elevation of 495 to 508. At Five Corners, we'll put in a tank that's four million gallons, and we'll have an elevation of 530 to 560. Give us a little bit more energy in the system and allow us to supply the customers in Fairfax and Ross to a better degree, or to the same or better degree than what we presently have. Also, that location allows us to feed water not only up to Fairfax, but also down to Ross. And it allows us to feed water from either treatment plant. So we'll have redundancy. We'll have water coming from either San Geronimo Treatment Plant or Bon Tempe Treatment Plant. So that location is key to us. It also allows us to take out the last segment of that major transmission line and replace it with new pipe. Ross Valley Tanks will be two tanks, down at the lower elevation of 340 to 370, and that will supply Ross. Presently, there's only a million gallons of storage there for a demand that's roughly 15 million gallons a day during the summer. This is Pine Mountain Tunnel. It was constructed in 1919. It was actually an ingenious system at the time. They have gravity flow coming from Alpine, Lake Alpine, down into the Ross Valley and point south. And at that particular point in time, it was, no water quality was required to be a higher standard. In the 1970s, we came out with a requirement for the treatment plants. And when the treatment plants were started, this was turned into a storage facility, even though it was never designed for that. This is Ross Reservoir. Ross Reservoir has a slide that's moving back into the one part of the reservoir. When I started over 11 years ago with the Water District, that slide was out about 11 feet. It's presently about seven feet from the reservoir. So do your own math. The reservoir also has a screen on it. That screen does not meet the current security and water quality requirements. So this reservoir is one that urgently needs replacing over time. What is the proposed project? We have eight million gallons of potable water storage. There's two two-million gallon tanks at the Ross Reservoir site. Those are the Ross Valley Tanks, one and two. And then we have one four-million gallon tank near Five Corners. It's actually 1,000 feet north of Five Corners. I'll show you that in a later slide. We'll remove Ross Reservoir, so we'll get that out of the system. So we'll no longer have to concern ourselves with that slide coming closer. And we'll decommission Pine Mountain Tunnel, which is a tunnel that California Department of Public Health has urged us to get out of the system as quickly as possible. And we also have the energy recovery capacity. If you look at the difference in the elevation between the tanks, it's the elevation difference between 570 and 360. And with that, we can capture that energy, recover it through a turbine, and we can supply enough energy for 129 homes here in Marin. We also have the potential for bat habitats. And this was a part of the study we had done by Wildlife Research Associates out of Santa Rosa. And they found that there's potential for 10 different species to occupy or live in the Pine Mountain Tunnel after it's abandoned. Five Corners Tank is 1,000 feet north of Five Corners. You'll see Five Corners there on the far right side. You go down Deer Park Road, and after you go down Deer Park Road, you will have a, cut a new road into where the tank will be at the top of the ridge. And you may ask, why is the tank rectangular and round end? We've done that for three reasons. First, it reduces the number of trees we have to take out. Second, reduces the amount of excavation we have to do at the site. And third, it reduces the visibility. These are the two tanks at Ross Valley. We'll construct the rectangular and round end tank first, the one that shapes, you can see how it sort of shapes around the road there. That again allows us to take out less trees. It allows us to have less visibility. And of course, has less excavation, because the soil has already formed that way by the prior road. After that one gets fully operational, we'll then move on to the second tank, which will be Ross Valley Tank Number Two, and that will be two million gallons. What is our schedule? We've just completed our preliminary design and design report, so we have a good handle on what the project is and the project definition. So we'll be moving on into the SEQA review in the next month or two. And after a year or so of that review, we'll start and finish the final design. Complete the trails first. One of the things we want to do is maintain public access around the tank locations. So when we do construction, we don't have the concern of the public not being able to access our lands. Also, we want to build roads so we have continuing fire coverage for the watershed. We'll do the first two tanks, which are the Ross Valley Number One and the Five Corners Tank. And as those are completed, and when those are done, we're going to remove the Pine Mountain Tunnel from service, and we're going to remove Ross Reservoir from service. We'll then start the second tank at the Ross Valley Tank Site, and we'll complete that within another year. And as that, that tank is being constructed, we'll then complete the studies for the, for the bat habitat, because there are certain temperatures and moistures where the bats can produce or, or feel most comfortable. After we prove that out as being a viable site for bats, we'll plug the ends of the, the tunnel, about 100 feet in, put in bat gates, and decommission Pine Mountain Tunnel by early 2019. And now I open it up to questions. Phoenix Lake is located approximately 2,000 feet to the south of the reservoir, the Ross Reservoir. And Phoenix Lake is a open body reservoir that we use for pumping up to Bon Tempe Treatment Plant. And we use that on occasions, usually the second year of a drought is when we use that water as a water supply. We use it in the second year of a drought typically?
The tanks are big drought.
Right. That lake is not that big. But it is, it is the second year of drought supply for us.
Yes, but as you know, that, that reservoir is about to get a greater capacity as a result of the Flood Zone 9 activity.
There's a number of studies that are going on, and one of them was be to increase the size of the reservoir capacity, yes.
No, actually, I think the grant has been, if I'm correct, awarded by the state at this point, and the train is moving down the track on that one.
Right. We're familiar, we've actually, John Lahey and, and our group has worked closely with us to come up with the MOU with the county on the study, right? Yes.
So why not just build some additional storage capacity at the water treatment facility?
It's at a different elevation. And the elevation that we need here is around 530 to 560 to supply back into Fairfax and also to go down into Ross. The elevations at the treatment plant are higher and are also not out in the system. So when you get something that is storing capacity out in the system, you're closer to your customers. So you have a better ability to supply them if you have any emergency or if you need the daily demand fluctuation. You can supply it through your pipeline. Your pipelines are one, just think of it as a small straw that you're going through. So the straw has to be able to feed the water out to where the customers are. And that puts it out into the system where we've got the tanks.
So has DPH told you that they will not accept reconditioning the Pine Mountain Tunnel?
I'll have John Lahey actually answer that. He went through part of the extensive study that we had done previously.
Good evening. John Lahey, I'm the principal engineer. They have said that we need to either completely recondition it or get it out of the system. We did a study, and it was very expensive to recondition it. Also, it would be out of service for a long period of time, and we need the functioning water storage for it during that period. So we considered it and decided it was better to replace it for, just impractical.
Because the report I read on the website from 2011 indicated the total price on that was about $11 million, which is about half of what the proposed increased storage would be for these two facilities. So, I mean, to, we'll see as this thing goes forward, but my question is, if it was reconditioned with cement, whether DPH will accept that as an acceptable, I'm sorry, water storage facility?
If it could be made to meet all of the requirements for treated water storage, yes, they would.
So is that question has not been answered yet by DPH?
No, it has been answered. As I mentioned, in order to recondition that, it would have to be out of service for a year. And in order to do that, I've got to build storage somewhere.
Right, right, right.
So if I build storage somewhere, I may as well use it permanently, because I need as much storage as is already there in place for the year when it's being reconditioned.
Okay.
So the cost of the reconditioning may be small, but it also involves constructing a lower storage facility regardless.
Yeah, and I understand that. My reading of the 2011 report indicated, even with building that, that temporary storage facility, or I don't even know if it would be temporary, the cost of that project would be about half of what, what the, this proposed project would be. The other question I have is, I'm not really understanding where the, the Five Corners Tanks are going to be. You said it's 1,000 feet north of Five Corners. And I'm just wondering, is, where is that in relation to, to the Town of Fairfax? Which street is closest to that?
It's Deer Park Road here. It goes down through here. And Deer Park Road comes down the hill, the deer, the school, so there it is. That's down, what was down in the hill.
So will all that construction material be moving through the Deer Park neighborhood and up?
It'll actually be coming up Fairfax-Belenus Road, the, oh, thank you, John. It'll be coming up Fairfax-Belenus Road for the, access for the materials. The offhauling will be occurring. Our plan is to offhaul the, the spoils onto a place on the watershed to keep the number of trucks and traffic off the streets of Fairfax.
And where will the new road be cut into the watershed?
There'll be a road cut from the Deer Park Road up to here, about 350 feet.
And, so is that within the Town of Fairfax?
No, that's in the watershed.
Okay. Is it off the, the road in the Town of Fairfax?
No, this is, this is at least, I'm not sure where the Fairfax City Line is, but this is well inside of the, the watershed boundary.
Okay. And just as far, as you go through the SEQA process, you're going to be looking at the, the impact on the view and all that as it goes forward?
Right, yeah. We, we've actually started identifying the viewpoints and the places that actually look, that's one of the reasons why we're keeping it low. This tank, the top of the tank, is about a foot lower than the existing soil. So our intent is to keep the tank partly buried.
Buried, okay.
It's not fully buried, it's partly buried.
And then, as far as the one that's going to replace the Ross Storage Facility?
Right.
Are you going to have to reconfigure? Is it, is it Broken Spring, Warren Springs Road that goes down to that facility?
Warren Springs Road is going to be realigned. And I'll show you the next slide here. You'll see the road going up around the old tank. That will be realigned prior to us taking, the, starting the construction of the first tank at Ross Valley. So we'll have the new road in place prior to the start of the excavation for the new tanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
And I, I would like just confirm, I mean, I've, I've had other residents also ask me about this, and Fairfax-Belenus Road, it's got a lot of cracks and some slides that have been happening over the years. And, you know, a lot of people are nervous about it, especially people who use it every day. So you had stated that this is going the other direction on Fairfax-Belenus Road?
If I did state that, I was wrong. It has to take, the material has to come up through Fairfax to the Concrete Pipe Road and then go in Concrete Pipe Road to this location on, at Five Corners.
Okay. And so that's going then through downtown Fairfax?
Yes. The material, the material would need to come up the, from 101, come across and then up Fairfax-Belenus Road, and then in Concrete Pipe Road. And that would be for the concrete and the steel, for the material for the construction.
Okay. But the spoils from the?
The spoils were identified since placed on the watershed where we can offhaul the spoils. One of them is an old quarry that we could reuse the soil there.
Okay. And, and so that's not going through Fairfax, correct?
The spoils would not have to go through Fairfax. If we dispose of it there, one of the options being considered is onsite disposal, or watershed spoils disposal. And the other one is to reuse the spoils, or reuse the soil on a, on a landfill someplace.
Okay. Do you know about how many trucks you expect with the concrete and steel?
The tanks?
We're still looking at that.
Still working on that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm still working on those numbers. That's one of the ones, we've got a construction engineer working with us on that.
Yeah, knowing that road, that's going to be a concern, just because that road is, you know.
Part of the DIR process, we're going to have to quantify all that and explore all the impacts.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be important to mention it now. It's, it's, it's going to be a concern. People have already brought it up to me, so.
We hear you.
Thank you.
So will we go into all the DIR process, the public scouting meeting towards the end of the summer? We're going to, to address their concerns. We just wanted to let you guys know about this, so that when that happens, you don't go a lot, "What? Big storage project?"
Oh, yeah. That's, that's important, yeah.
Yeah. We want, we want to keep you in loop.
Well, it's good. I'm glad you have, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the room here?
Sure.
Could you please use the microphone just for the public record, yeah? And also so people at home can hear.
My first question is, in going forth, if this is going to be complete by 2019, what is your expected increase in cost of the individual water bill? Will you change your billing from a parcel to a, like for instance, a unit base? And if so, will there be conservation offsets for those of us who want to conserve our water?
So I think the basic question is, how does this impact our water bills? And what will be the impact? Will it be on a per-unit basis of water used, or will it be on a per-parcel basis? Is that correct?
Well, partially because right now it's by parcel as opposed to units, it's something that, that large parcel with the toilets.
I'm not sure I get the question.
Well, how, how much will you be adding to our bill?
I'm sorry, you have to use the microphone when you're, can you?
Thanks. I, I just wanted to ask how you'll bill us, like a parcel or for multiple units or per-unit basis? If there will be offsets, if we employ conservation? And what is your anticipated or expected price increase at the end of this project?
Okay. So I think I hear you saying, what would be the price increase? And would it be per unit or per parcel? We presently have a Fireflow Master Plan, that is $75 per year per parcel. That is not funding this particular project. This is under a long-term capital plan. Our long-term capital plan is to improve our capital resources over the long term of roughly 100 years. The tanks that we presently use are 100-year-old tanks. The tanks we're putting in are going to be for 100 years. So every 100 years, we have to go through and build these size of tanks. As part of our ongoing requirement for having capital and, and funds available at the Water District, we receive revenue from our customers. In the way, we receive revenues per unit check and also per unit of water. Those rates will comply with the amount of capital and revenue we need as we go forward. How that would be impacted by any particular year, I really can't say. We'd have to talk to the finance person. But as we go through the years and as costs increase and as the need for these facilities comes up, we do have to increase rates, just to cover their cost, because we do have a system that has aged and is over 100 years old.
I'd like to comment regarding that.
All right, could you use the microphone, please?
This, this project, it's roughly 20-something million dollars. Our annual capital program is 15 to 18, so we would incorporate that into our normal stream of, of our capital program. It, it, it sounds like a big number, but when you work it into the budget over this many years, it's not a huge change in, in the price. And as far as, when you compare it to our overall operating budget, which is going to push $100 million, it, it's not a big number. And so it, it certainly is a cost, and it will be, come from rates, most likely.
Is the incremental cost increase that you can add to our bills?
I think you asked, will it incrementally increase in cost to our bill? And I think our answer is, as we have to replace facilities over the long term, given we're a 100-year-old Water District, yes, we will have continuing rate increases to cover those capital and operating costs.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, another question.
I'm a little critical of the Water District. I've been around a long time, since 1933.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, I've been around. Yeah, you got, you can't hear you half the time back here. Your mics are too far away. But anyway, I've been around for But anyway, I've been around for a long time, and I've watched a lot of the progress that the water company made. And I'm a little critical of some of the things that are going on. Just last Wednesday, the flood control is planning on raising the Phoenix, Phoenix Lake for flood control, and at the same time, they're going to do a lot of favors for the Water District, and that's all flood control money. And they said $20 million, and then at the end of the article in the IJ, it said it's probably closer to $40 million. One of the things they're going to do is cool the water that's going into Ross Creek. I don't know why they're doing that, because there's no fish in the Ross Creek anymore. So I don't know, some of the things they're doing, to me, don't make a lot of sense. And I know neither of you guys have commented on it yet. And another thing that really burns me is about, let's see, 40 years ago, maybe, yeah, about 40 years ago, the Water District built a lake up at close, just east of Marshall called Sulley-Hooly. Have you ever heard of that lake? They built the Sulley-Hooly Lake, and not one drop of that water has ever gone into the system. And they, they didn't have the energy to run the pumps that would push that water over the top of this mountain range into Nakashio Lake. And so what they do, they've got a couple of big Fairbanks and more stecel engines up there that they just overhauled, I understand. And it takes a mechanic to go out there at least once a month to make sure those stecel engines are ready to pump water over the hill. But so far, in 40 or 50 years, we haven't seen a drop of that water, and I don't know why they built that lake. And these are another things that bother me with the Water District. They seem to be spending a lot of money that aren't really necessary. They should take that lake and take the dam down and let the water go back into Walker Creek. It's just crazy. So if you guys want to comment on it, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, a suggestion?
Yes.
Just, it's a presentation, it almost seems like you'd be better off requesting the Water District or the community meeting to talk about this stuff in the future or offline, and that'd be more appropriate.
Well, that's probably true.
I can make one or two comments on his comment, if you wish.
Yeah, just wrap it up real quickly, please, thanks.
In 1990, when we had the droughts, and some of you may remember the drought in 1990, we did use Sulley-Hooly, and Sulley-Hooly was pumped over Nakashio, and thankfully, we had that water to alleviate a portion of that drought. So we used about 4,000 acre feet out of Sulley-Hooly that year. We do use that in the second year of a drought. Hopefully, we'll not have that situation occur very frequently. Our plan is to not have it occur, but God willing, we'll be at that place, but God unwilling, we will have to use the water. We presently have a plan put forward where we're putting in new pumps, our new electrical pumps out there that can be charged by generators, so. It is a source that we use when we have to use it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I think that concludes our.
And thank you very much for inviting us here today.
Okay, sure. And that concludes the presentation by the Water District. Right now, we have open time for public expression. There is a three-minute limit, time limit, per person. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium, state your name and address. Individuals have three minutes to speak, or if you're representing a group, it's five minutes. This is the time set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on matters not listed on the agenda. State law provides that we are not permitted to take any action and strictly limits our right to discuss any unengendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediately, immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So first up, David Haskell.
David Haskell in Kiki LaPorta at 25 Glenn Drive here in Fairfax. To bring reference to Councilman Bregman's reference to the 400 parts per million, I'd like to quote a friend, Drew Dillinger. "It's 3:23 in the morning, and I'm awoken by the voices of my great-great-grandchildren asking me, 'What did you do when you knew? What did you do when you knew that the seas were rising?'" And so in that spirit, that we need to do because we do know. And in some ways, I'd like to take the beautiful town of Fairfax and its wonderful reputation for being the first. But we have an opportunity to ignite a movement that will may spread to the rest of the cities of Marin, maybe to all the counties in California and onward. But I'd like to take this opportunity to make a recommendation to this council, that they do three things. For those who pervade and sell petroleum products in our district, that those people are, I'd like you to have, I've got three requests. First, that they are required to support programs that assist the public to overcome carbon fuel addiction. Secondly, that in the place of that sale, that they are required to post and to provide information on clean transport alternatives. And the last request, I'll pass to my partner, Kiki, and she can share this with you, please.
Fossil fuels. Warning. Unabated use of petroleum fuels results in catastrophic climate events and death of living organisms. Please ask for information on clean transport options and programs to assist the public in overcoming carbon fuel addiction. Fairfax Town Council, Fairfax, California. This is a prototype. This tiny community is about to have its third gas station. Everybody who wants to go to the beach, or Olima, or the forest passes through our town. We have an extraordinary opportunity to make a statement. And we offer our services in whatever way may be possible and useful to help our town council to think about how we might work with those companies and corporations who benefit from the sale of what's killing us, to help to elevate the conversation and the habits and behavior of those of us who willingly purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you.
May we sit that to?
My name's Joseph Odom, I live on Portius Avenue, and I'm here to bring up an issue that's of a lot of concern to the town and a lot of people, especially in the Deer Park neighborhood, which is the bonfires that have been set all winter and into the spring behind Deer Park School on the main road. When you get to the first intersection, it's Oak Tree Junction. And it appears that they happen mostly on weekends, and within the last month, they've gotten pretty large, using eight- and 12-inch logs, we find there with. And I understand that this is MMWD land, and, you know, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction over what goes on back there and how it's patrolled, but I haven't had satisfactory answers when I've addressed this issue to MMWD. You know, I will talk to them on the phone, and they'll tell me things like, "Well, we'll send a ranger back there to clean it up." And I have, I have met, my wife and I met with a ranger back there, and he's very concerned and has told us that everybody in Fairfax should be concerned about this. And I'm hoping that the town council will address this as an emergency issue tonight because we are in probably the driest spring that we've encountered, as we can remember, and even last weekend, there was a small evidence of a little fire, not a big one. But I'm not absolutely sure that this gets patrolled in the evenings, and I've also talked to Scott Alber, who's a fire marshal, and he's talked to the Sheriff's Department. So a lot of parties are aware of this problem, but I think that, at the very least, a letter to MMWD and the Sheriff's Department from the town council might be in order, so. That's what I had to say.
Joseph, are these fires between, you know, the end of Deer Park and the school, or is it past and beyond the school?
When you go on the main road behind the school, you get to the first intersection of a couple of trails, and it's called Oak Tree Junction, and it's not very far back. And it was actually in just about the same area where we had the fire in 2011. So it's really, really close to town, like a few hundred yards.
The end of the flat section, talking about?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The end of the flat section?
No, not even.
Okay.
Yeah. Close to the end of the flat section, but, yeah.
Can we ask Garrett, can you take a lead in coordinating some conversation with MMWD and whoever else has to be talked to about this?
Sure, yeah, we could do that. Actually, I'm texting the chief, let him know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Diane Hoffman, and I also live on Portius, 33 Portius. And I really wanted to thank Joseph, he's just been a one-man show, finding out about it, letting the neighbors know, sending us photographs of the remains of the fire. And on his own, he's trying to get help and to have something done before we have another fire. The last fire, there were just truck after fire truck going down Portius, there were airplanes, and it was really pretty scary. And, you know, it's not your responsibility to take care of it, but maybe you can put the heat on the people and organizations who can do something. And the money it would take them to patrol is a drop in the bucket compared to not even the damage from another fire that can happen, but just the cost of those airplanes and the trucks. I mean, that would, that's a very, very big expense. So again, thank you, Joseph, so much, and please help the neighborhood.
I think that's the intention.
Yvette Wakefield, Berry Trail. First, I just want to mention that, in my opinion, the poster for the Fairfax Farmers' Market is really inappropriate for promoting good health. Obviously, the young woman farm workers depicted as being very sexy, and that type of art should not be used for the purpose of promoting healthy attitudes. That art is fine in the proper place. Young people should not think the picture of health is what the poster shows. If you want to promote girls thinking that they should be Barbie dolls, then don't object. But if you want to promote girls thinking that eating healthy food promotes an appearance of good health, then please depict someone who doesn't look like an astonishingly beautiful, thin, sexy farm girl who's lifting up her dress. For what? That's not why I'm here, that was just one. The main reason I'm here is that Fairfax is not Candlestick Park, you guys. Regarding a loud PA system for Little League and other events, this has been a problem ever since Little League got their new PA system seven to nine years ago. Those loud PA systems are not appropriate for a little ball field in a little town. I believe I do have the right to peace and quiet in my home. I purposely live away from the main areas of downtown and busy streets because of several health conditions which require that I do not have stress. For me, loud noise really is a threat to my life. When the volume is not on high, I can still hear the games and the announcements, but it sounds okay. It sounds like it's something taking place at a distance. But when they have the PA system really loud, it sounds like it's being lifted up into the air and right in front of my home where I live on the hill. Okay, so a couple of years ago, Michael Rock spoke to the people at Little League, telling them they had to turn it down, and they told him, "Oh, no, we can't turn it down, it doesn't have that option." He goes, "In that case, you can't use it." Well, they managed to turn it down. So, however, the problems come and go, and they start, they, this year's been pretty good, until on Mother's Day, they started turning it up, and then the next week, it was up also, and I spoke to the police department. And Sergeant Baker told me that because they have a use permit, they can have it as loud as they want, that they can ask them to turn it down, and if they want to be nice, they can do so, but if they don't want to, that they don't have to. And I don't think that is true. There, there was town, an exemption to the ordinance, section 8.20.070, but the exemption doesn't say they can have it as loud as they want. I want the Fairfax Town Council to please have some type of guidelines for the loudness of these events. It's also happening in other areas of Marin. Marin Catholic has a new PA system, it's bothering their neighbors. This one woman can't put her baby down for a nap because of the noise. Do you know what it's like for a baby when they can't nap because the noise prevents them? That's bad for the baby, it's bad for the parents, that's bad for society. So please think of the rights of all people, young people, babies, old people like me.
Yvette, always rare, but a delight when I can agree with you. So I can tell you that up where I live, the sound travels, I almost feel as if I am at AT&amp;T Park myself. And my neighbors are concerned, and I raised this with Judy, who apparently knew everybody in the Ross Valley, and she, Judy Anderson, our prior town manager.
Yeah, yeah.
And she would make a few phone calls. I had the opportunity to discuss this with our new town manager, and I know that he is also engaged in this, so hopefully we can.
I thought you would be understanding, David. I, you know, I haven't been coming to meetings, I don't stay up late, but I read in the newspaper that you supported the people who were complaining about the noise going on all night at 7:11.
Well, you touched the nerve to me when you talked about napping, that's my favorite thing, so, thank you very much. We'll take care of this, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Robert Biffes, and.
And I'm Shirley Carson, my husband Richard Carson.
I own a duplex, 17-manner, since 1989. And I'm here tonight to talk about the total devastation that's been happening for over two years at 19, right next door, between the two of us, 19-manner road. One man has single-handedly ruined a neighborhood and the property values, and he's doing it by taking full advantage of the rules that Fairfax lacks. I don't know that this could happen anywhere else in Marin County. The whole, it's not only hurting me, but the whole neighborhood is being devalued. And I would hope you guys would go there for yourselves and to see what has happened to this once-upon-a-time neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood. It has become, 19-manner, the lot, has become a rat-infested construction dump site with no actual construction going on for the last two years. Just dumping materials in and out, digging holes, trenches, putting in foundations. An old house, which should have been condemned, was moved seven feet from my property line. It's blocking and ruined my view and my son. They also razed it several feet, now it's looming over my backyard. As a result of this, the excavation for the foundation, they have just piled dirt along my fence line and actually knocked it down in three or four places. The fence is just completely down. And as a result of this, you know, I've lost my tenants, and I'm having a very difficult time finding new tenants. And I haven't, and I'm just amazed that the town, you know, could let this travesty go on for this amount of time. And I've talked to Mark, the building inspector, he can do nothing. I went to see, you mentioned the town manager, he wouldn't even come out of his office, he kept sending his secretary, or whoever it was in the town, there, back and forth asking me questions, and I just, I wanted to explain it to him, and I couldn't get through to him either.
We own the property next door at 21-manner road, and I've, well, my grandparents own that home, and my parents, and now I own that home. And it is, it's a complete disaster next door. And we also have tenants that are complaining because it's, there's rats, and in the back of the house, which faces the creek, there's all kinds of debris. I don't even know what's probably going down into that creek area. But it has just, it's just been terrible. And when I've tried to talk to the foreman, he said, "Well, what are you going to do about it? I have a permit." Well, first of all, when that house was moved forward, we never got any notice that that was going to go on, and I don't think he did either, that they were. that was going to go on, and I don't think he did either, that they were going to move that whole house forward. I always thought usually neighbors are contacted when something like that's going to happen. It's quite high, and he said, "Oh, no," that it was just an optical illusion. And he's just been very, very sarcastic with us, but it is just, it is really awful. I, and, and my tenants are complaining too. I'm afraid I might be losing our tenants. But I don't know if this is the proper venue to come to, but we don't know who else to go to and for this complaint.
Let me suggest that I will agendize this for the late July council meeting, and I would ask council to begin an investigation of whether there's nuisance abatement that has to be attended to. I was also contacted by residents not far from where Lou lives about this, and I had the opportunity to speak a little briefly with the manager about it. But I will agendize this for our late July meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Just, could I ask you, does that mean there will be a time limit for him to move forward?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For, for the, the man to move, to do something, to get, will there be a time limit?
It's not the time for us to get into the details, because this is just open time. But we will agendize this for our next council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I just wanted to say that there's stuff stored in there. I mean, they had to have these big posts to raise the house. They're still stored, they're stacked this high, half the width of this room long, there's a trailer in there, I don't know what's in it, just, he's storing stuff in there, and when he needs it, he takes it somewhere else. And it's like, it's like a transfer yard for him. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And weeds, they're dried, dead, fire hazard.
Could I just ask a question of Jim Moore? Are you familiar with this site?
Yes, and there are things going on behind the scenes, and it's, it is an issue that we are dealing with, and we will be looking forward to bringing it back to you. We've been teetering on going to the next level with what's going on, and there is a history we can provide to you on what happened with moving that house away from the creek, which was a good thing, and then the mission creep that occurred after that.
Okay, so, we can get a history and a staff report at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
Did you want to add anything, Mark? No? Okay.
Okay, more next month.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Cross. I was appointed to the Marin Municipal Water District Board back in December, and wanted to come just to introduce myself to you and offer myself as a resource if ever you would like it. I'd be happy to get together. I'll start just by saying I note the fire issue, the bonfire issue, and we'll follow up with Mr. Toy tomorrow. I wanted to also just kind of give you a sixty-second update on the water district and my observations in the first six months. Firstly, I would say that it's been an honor to represent you and others up in Ross Valley and San Dona Valley. My impressions are very positive about the district, starting with the staff. They're an amazing team of people, truly dedicated public servants. And we have a new general manager who brings a really strong financial expertise, and he's been an enormous resource. As we are moving into looking at our budget right now, and also for the gentleman who was asking about rates, we're looking at a rate review process that's currently underway, trying to make our rates serve us better by stabilizing our revenues, providing greater equity, supporting capital improvement programs, and so on. Speaking of capital improvement, you saw a good sample tonight. Our main objective always is to ensure the infrastructure for the future, working on pipeline replacements, tank replacement programs. Those have been funded in large part through a large bond issuance, but also through the Fire Flow Program, making sure that we have really good fire flow throughout the whole county. So, that's actually been really exciting. You know, who knew plumbing could be so interesting? I know that people here are also interested in the watershed, and you're very familiar, I think, already with the Wildland Fire and Habitat Improvement Program. That's ongoing, you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward. There's also an effort to consider creation of a watershed trust to support good and beneficial projects on the watershed. So, if I may, I'll just close with that, leave my cards. And as I said, I'd be glad to get together with any of you if ever that was desired. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. Oh, push it in.
My name is Karen Lynn, and I live on Portius Avenue also, and I'm here about the bonfires that are happening at night. And so, part of my concern is the fact that if they do get a fire going up, going on up there, it's going to happen at one or two in the morning, and I doubt that they'll report it. So, it's a kind of a scary thing for us, and I do hope you do, you know, whatever you can do to get MMWD to deal with it. And if they won't, then I hope you'll maybe agendize this so we can talk about, I don't know, Neighborhood Watch Committee, how we set something like that up, because I think it's a big danger for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Matt Tansley, I was just here...
I'll get this one.
Okay.
Members of the board, my name is David Hoffman, and this is my very good friend, Matt Tansley. He's a world-famous local artist. He approached the board earlier today about the Artist and Resident Program.
Yes.
Which is a volunteer program that he did two interviews with the park and recreations. His main concern is, is that this is a summer program for the kids, and he said that you asked him to come back next month. Now, next month will be July, and then summer will be halfway over. And then at that point, it will be, you know, the, the program starting will be, you know, fertile. So, his concern is, is that he doesn't, you know, he's gone to the park and recreations twice and had two interviews, and they are, they say that he is his man. And he just want, he didn't know if you understood that, or his, you know, he's just worried that if it doesn't start this month, it won't start. So, is there any way that we might be able to, you know, have a revote, or?
May I say something?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dave. He knows Larry Bragman, the ex-mayor, and that's why he's concerned about this. I just called Richard Pedemonte, who is the, the chairman of the Parks and Recreation, and he had voted me as their number-one choice, because the two people that were, the other choices did not show up twice. I went through two interviews, I brought all my stuff, I showed all my work there with Maria Baird, and Richard Pedemonte, and Elon, and Michelle here, and I had two interviews, and they said they had chosen. So, there seems to be some miscommunication here, and I was told that I was supposed to be here tonight to get elected. Now, this gentleman over here seems to know what was going on, and I was appreciative of the fact that you were, you know, saying that we should vote it tonight, because as Dave here has said, by July, it's going to be a little late. And the, I've already been voted as the number-one choice, and those two people did not show up, and they said they were not the right people, and they did not bring in any, any show of their works of art, or any sort of a presentation. And I brought all that, and now I've come here and done it again, and by July, it's just going to be a little too late, so I was hoping we could take a revote.
I don't... Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We, we have a special meeting next week on June 10th, and maybe we could add this to the June 10th agenda?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So that we could make a decision quickly, more sooner than later.
Okay, that'd be nice. I just contacted Richard Pedemonte, who is the chair of the Parks and Recreation.
You know, we understand that.
He said he's going to talk to Elon.
Yeah, we understand that.
So, they're probably going to get in touch with you.
So, if, if the, if the rest of the council agrees with that, maybe we could, maybe we can expedite it and move it up to, to next week.
Okay.
To be June, June 10th.
Thank you very much. June 10th, I'll be expecting to hear from you.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Six PM.
Six o'clock.
Be here at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. And do you want me to bring my work with me again, or anything like that, or me, or just show up?
Just, I think, just come.
Okay.
You could bring a couple pieces. We're going to have a different audience, so, you know, you could bring some, some, you don't have to bring the whole thing.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Lou Vaccaro, 21 Lima Road. I would just like to call, call the attention of the council that I really don't feel as though the council and the city of Fairfax is taking, should take a bigger role in this flood control business. I'm definitely against this detention basin they want to build up at Gomez Field and the dam that they want to put up by Fairfax School up there on Glen Drive. I don't know if anyone's ever came here to find out what Fairfax thinks about these projects, but what, the way I look at it, I said, I ask myself, well, what's caused the floods in Fairfax? And I think all of you know what caused the floods. It was in the 60s and in the 1960s that they know that this tunnel is too small, way too small, and this tunnel has to be enlarged. But the flood control has, doesn't say a thing about that. But that, one of the town employees was killed, he drowned trying to clear that tunnel, and they found his body halfway between Fairfax and San Somo. Now, you've got to look at this thing as far as the city of Fairfax is concerned. We know what's causing the flood, that damn tunnel is too small, and it's got to be done. It, we've, we're paying taxes for the flood control, and we want them to pay, pay attention to what we want here in Fairfax. And I think that instead of a square tunnel, they should have a big circular tunnel with no concrete on the bottom, just be all a natural bottom. And then each year when it rains, that, the end of that tunnel will always equal the elevation in the, in the main creek. And that'll help fish come up, they wouldn't have to have any jumping or anything like that. And, and besides that, there's a lot of other obstructions. There's one down at the base of Pacheco Avenue, and that's that old water line, or sewer line, that went across the creek at the end of Pacheco Avenue. And a lot of you might remember that you, you had to hire Gelati Brothers to remove all those trees, which were like twenty feet high, that were all jammed against that. And in moving that, that huge equipment they had tipped over, and they had to get another piece of equipment, and tipped over on the obstruction that's going across the creek. And this shouldn't be there, it should be torn out. So, there's a lot of things that should be done here in Fairfax to help the floods. And anytime you want to get together with me and we talk about it, I'll be very glad to help you out. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Lou. Thank you very much.
Hello, council. Actually, two things. First thing I want to say, then I'll address something to have us all think of a broader picture. The current creek setback ordinance, as well as it's been advertised, it would affect probably 3,000 people if it incorporated east and west Marin. I actually provided to the supervisors that when I took their own creek map, that does not include the ephemeral creeks for the topographical elements we have in our county, overlaid it with a 2011 assessor's map, added a 100-foot buffer zone to incorporate these parcels, and restricted the parcels down to a single parcel, independent of how many elements, as a culvert, a drainage, a creek, or ephemeral creek touched it. There's actually 10,386 parcels that could be affected by this ordinance being proposed by SPA. That current value, when assessing just the land value of those 10,386 parcels, is $3,005,005,000 and change. So, with that taking, there's potentially a huge amount of property that it's de-assessed is going to affect all of our public pocketbooks. There's current litigation that's already been resolved in the appellate court by the name of Lockway versus Alameda County against Measure D, which had similar language of taking, because it actually thwarted some growth. There are other issues, but even still, in reviewing this, it shows a potential expense to our county if people do submit any, any sort of building permits for taking. But putting that aside, I'm just hoping the county or the council will be aware of these issues, because I've been presenting them to the supervisors. The actual concrete that we're talking about at the end of Pacheco is, in fact, a concrete abatement for a pipe that was put in 1922 as a sewer pipe. And the reason we have floods, which is a very easy way to think, think if you had water on a plate. If the plate is supporting the water, and you slowly move the plate, the water's going to dribble off one side. If you take that plate and drop it very quickly, it's going to immediately rush to the side and make a mess. The way that we're really going to hold back this flooding is if we all hold a tablespoon of water. And we can do that by actually restricting the amount of water that goes into our creeks and using our streets as our first reservoir, our first safety. So, if all of our low-lying streets were really designed to incorporate maybe 12 inches of water, six inches of water below curb, it's not going to affect anybody. But when we add these basins and increase the sides of our drains, so it readily runs into the creek, and adds to that velocity going down, so it picks up our sediment load and carries more material, we have floods. So, it's not that we want to pull out all the dams and all the weirs, we actually want to make a collection of additional dams, additional things to slow the water down so that the soil has the opportunity to absorb the water and slowly dissipate it over the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, water's a huge topic, and, yeah, I think Flood District Nine and various different things, it's, it's good to think about slowing down the water. But at this point, seeing nobody else, I'm going to close the public expression section, open time for public expression, sorry. Now, we have council reports and comments, and want to start at your end this time?
Sure. A lot of interesting things. The, the night after, this night, we attended the Board and Commissioners Dinner, which was tremendously put on to support and thank the many volunteers that serve out our boards and commissioners. The Ross Valley Fire Department along its monthly meeting, the Flood Zone Nine, actually, had its quarterly meeting, which I attended. The first Measure I meeting that I'm aware of, I attended with Larry and another member of the community, Brad Weidlock. I had the pleasure of stopping by the Open Space Committees Extravaganza a couple of weekends ago, and the Chamber Breakfast that was held, and which our town manager spoke at this past Friday.
Me?
Sure.
I attended two meetings of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, which basically administers the cable television franchise fees, which we receive for the use of our public rights away by the cable companies here in Marin County, which are Comcast and AT&amp;T. There were two meetings of that organization, and there's going to be a discussion a little later on in our, on our agenda, so we'll get into it a little bit later. I attended a meeting of the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, which is actually a very interesting joint powers authority among the Ross Valley communities, which administers the paramedic program. We have an excellent paramedic program, world-class response to cardiac events and medical emergencies. And there was a pretty interesting discussion about how that will fit in to the new Affordable Care Act. So, I think there's going to be some good opportunities for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority to improve the delivery of its service and actually improve its, its revenue, its return of revenue to the organization. And the last one that is worth reporting on is the Measure I Committee that met last week. There were a number of things, a number of issues that came up on Measure I that we're looking into. We're looking into fluctuations in revenue. Measure I is based on a per living unit, it's based on living units, so if you have more than one living unit, there should be, you know, the, the tax is assessed on each living unit. For some reason, we've had fluctuations in revenue, and our finance director's going to be looking into that. We're also going to be trying to keep track of the projects that Measure I is actually... We're also going to be trying to keep track of the projects that Measure I is actually paying for. Measure I is a dedicated fund for certain activities, police, fire, and also certain capital improvement projects, pedestrian and bike and other transportation safety projects. We're going to be trying to really capture the information so that we can show the residents what their tax dollars are actually accomplishing. So hopefully, I'll be able to bring back some more information for you in the next few months, so that's about it.
So I attended the Dominican University hosted an event on Plan Bay Area, and it was an informational evening. The Plan Bay Area is something that brings, that brings together the Metropolitan Transportation -- what am I making? I'm tired tonight. And ABAG, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments. And it's a, it's a, an item which is brewing in the county right now, so people are collecting information, and there are many different sides of the, of the story, so I'm informational at this point. Attended the Transportation Authority of Marin Executive Board meeting, which also talked and addressed the Plan Bay Area and other issues around the, around transportation in the county. Also, the Safe Routes to Schools Task Force meeting, talking about infrastructure changes and some of the public works projects going on in both Fairfax and San Somo, including the bicycle spine. Attended the Chamber of Commerce breakfast, where we started a conversation about Streets for People 2013. And I've been involved in the Festival Committee as the Zero Waste Coordinator. So I've been attending Festival Committee meetings, and we're ready to go, so.
It's that festival time of year. Yeah, and I also went to this open space benefit down here in the park, as well as the volunteer celebration here. Went to the Ross Valley Fire Meeting. Too many meetings to list. I'll have to ask my wife about that. Several to do with the Green Bray Interchange thing, which people say, well, that's not in Fairfax, but actually, people in Fairfax drive through it all the time, or ride their bikes, or try to get to the ferry, or whatever it is. It's pretty interesting. I should say, in relation to that, on this Monday at 4:00, and I believe that's in the community center in Santa Fel, they are, there's seven different community-based presentations and other ideas on how to solve the problems there, because basically, there have been nine attempts to design that very congested corridor, mostly by engineers at Caltrans, or, you know, that kind of approach, and they've all been rejected by the neighboring towns. So it will be interesting to see what people who are more the users of the area come up with. The Council MCC/MC meeting, several different meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, different issues coming up there. Went also to the Chamber of Commerce breakfast and a Fairbuck meeting, and a meeting with the school board, which was always a late-night one. And that, I'll stop there. Okay, so that is our reports on what we've been doing. And Garrett, do you have a town manager report?
Jim Moore's going to make a quick, quick report to the council.
Okay. I just have a couple of items to quickly report to you on. Last month, at your open-mic session, Professor Calderaro made a point about large houses and the need to limit the size of large houses in town, and that our current code allows up to 5,000 square feet of house if the lot is large enough. So Councilman Winesoff asked us to verify how many homes of 5,000 square feet have been built in the last five years, and I can report to you that zero homes have been built, 5,000 square feet, in the last five years. We drilled down a little bit deeper to see what the potential was in town. There are roughly 3,381 residential lots in the town of Fairfax, and those that would be large enough to accommodate a house of 5,000 square feet are 682, approximately 20% of our residential lot inventory. Finally, I just bring to your attention that there was recently a report issued by a conglomerate of environmental groups in town, I'm sorry, in the county called Community Marin 2013, by the Audubon Society, the Baylands Advocates, Conservation League, Sierra Club, Salmon Protection Watershed Network, San Geronimo Valley Planning Group. And in their recommendations, they include a recommendation to limit homes county-wide to 3,500 square feet with second units at 500 square feet. So that would be reporting back to you at your request. Next, I wanted to mention for the public that's viewing, as well for yourselves, that we are going to have next week in this room, one week from tonight, the long-awaited community meeting between the General, sorry, the Good Earth Market and the Neighborhood. We went ahead, this is a town-sponsored meeting that I will be moderating at your request. It's not a formal town meeting, but we did go ahead and notice a 500-foot radius around the Good Earth property site. So for, again, that's open to the public, it'll be in this room at 6:30 next Wednesday night on June 12th.
And neither John nor I will be attending. Fire board.
Well, I bet you it'll still be going.
I hope so.
So, and lastly, but not least, I would like to introduce you to somebody sitting across from me in the room tonight, Arajit Sen, who is a graduate student in the Department of City and Regional Planning at Berkeley, my alma mater. I'm an alumni of that program, too. He's midway through the two-year graduate program, City and Regional Planning. He is doing a two-month internship with us, that he's coming up on the halfway mark for, and this is a full-time internship. And his time with us is being covered by a fellowship from the department. He is actually an architect in his hometown of Mumbai, India. He's a very learned fellow. He's already been helping us on many projects. He's taken on a application that'll be in the planning commission two weeks from tomorrow night here. He's put the grant application together for some sectional furniture up here so that the stage can be used for other things. He's done a lot of data mining for us on the amount of informal second units in town so we can capture those for credits in getting our housing element certified by the Housing and Community Development Department of the state, among many other things. So Arajit has become a member of our family very quickly on staff, and I just want to also thank his parents who are watching right now in Mumbai, India, where it, and they've been watching since 8:00 in the morning, it's now 10 after 9, waiting for this introduction. So thank you for letting your son come to America to school, and we may not let him come home to you, so you may start, may need to think to start about coming over here. But anyway, so, Arajit, it's great to have you onboard, and thank you for all your hard work, and we're going to work you to death between now and when you're done. So, thank you.
It's the miracle of the internet, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Yep. Great.
Sorry, one other thing is, do we introduce the new town attorney to the community?
I apologize, this is my mistake. Would you like to do it?
Oh, sure, I'd like to introduce Janet Coulson, our new town attorney with the firm of Richards Watson Gashan. She's here, she has a town email, so if you have any questions, just run them through me, and I'll get them to Janet.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I welcome that, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Come to the parade on Saturday.
Yeah, you should definitely come to the parade on Saturday. Do you have anything else to report, Garrett? Okay, great. Moving right along, then, we have the consent calendar, which is items 9 through 17. And if there's no discussion on any of those items, I would love to hear a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar after public comment.
Is there none?
Okay, so if anybody from the public would like to comment on any of these consent items, or any other council members speak now? Okay, I hearing nothing. Is there a second?
Here we go.
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah.
I heard something really interesting tonight. Hi, nice to meet you, Mayor. I've talked to you on the phone. Council members, my name is Josh LaFrono. I have met Mark, as well as Garrett. I am currently in the process of trying to have a bathroom when we have movies at the So I am the person that is trying to head up and move forward with getting these restrooms built. I am a father of a Little League kid, definitely hear what you're saying. I'm definitely going to bring back to Little League flat out to turn the music down. I think that's extremely rude and unnecessary, although at the same time, it is kind of nice that a child gets recognized when they walk up to the baseball plate.
That is a good idea.
But the music in between and so forth may not be necessary. I was at the field, I live, sorry, I'm a little bit, I don't know, nervous for some odd reason.
You're terrified.
I think it is. No, it's, I think it is, I think it is extremely unnecessary, and I will definitely bring that back. And I did want to just kind of introduce myself so that you guys know who I am face-to-face. You guys know who I am, who's putting this thing together to try to get this to happen, so that you guys know not to talk financial. We are talking about $20,000 in materials, roughly. A tremendous amount of donors are coming into play, a tremendous amount of people that are going to put this thing together. As you know, you had a $60,000 bid without concrete bids going in, so this thing could have turned into 70 or 80 grand, no problem. So I just wanted to thank you. Although there is a contractor that is still interested in bringing this together, I am still trying to get his participation in pushing this thing through. He is a big contractor here in Fairfax, Mike Hazel, who you, who you all know, spoke to John about, and I am trying to get him to, not necessarily join forces, but just to be part of a bigger thing than, than it can be, because I really want to get this thing taken care of for these kids. So, anyway, I have spoken with Garrett, and by the way, on the tree, I've been out four and five times remeasuring things to try to figure out, can we do something different? As you know, I did track down Rudy last Thursday morning to discuss with him his thoughts on it, and he said, you have my blessing, if you want to remove this tree, I'd rather not. And I said to him, let's just plant another at the field then. And he's like, let's keep the faith. So, anyway, Mark does have my email, as well as Garrett, as well as John. Larry, I sent you an email, you have my email, my phone number. If you guys want any information on what's going on and so forth, please, go to my house at 6 Spruce, I'm never there earlier than 7:00, my wife will say 8:00, but please, ask away, because I'm going to probably come back for an open session in July and want to discuss the opportunity of putting solar up to be able to, to get things in a different direction at the field, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all the efforts that you've put into this. I think you should be publicly acknowledged, and really, I, we've got some stumbling blocks, and this consent item here is basically about, you know, giving permission to take out this tree in case it can't get worked around. I know I moved one in my yard, and it didn't do too well, but it's, you know, it's sometimes possible. But thanks for all your efforts. I mean, it's a gargantuan project, and I'm hoping we get the insurance stuff worked out and so we can move forward.
It's clear. The insurance is completely clear. As of Friday at noon, Williamsport Little League Risk Management went ahead and approved the actual volunteers in the coverage of liability behind it with a $2 million policy, which has been forwarded to Garrett via email. Also, a letter has been sent to Little League President Steve Gallagher, who received the letter on Monday afternoon.
Okay.
So we're fully clear.
Great, well, we're getting off of the consent item, but--
Can I just ask you something?
The EcoFest Committee donated or is willing to donate the money for all the bathroom fixtures,
and we already got, I think we may have even gotten some purchased for us by O'Connell Plumbing. So when I corresponded with Steve, I mean, he mentioned there may have been, there may be another plumber involved, but as far as the fixtures are concerned, I mean, I think we should coordinate with that.
Okay, you must not have seen my email. I have in my possession all the fixtures that were donated by ECO, as well as I contacted O'Donnell Plumbing first to discuss with them the possibilities of either, A, volunteering time, or possibly putting a bid in to just do the plumbing. I was, Paul Guzman of O'Donnell had--
Okay. Yep. There's a lot of details to this, let's take it offline.
Absolutely, absolutely. But yes, everything is, has been donated and in possession.
And believe, it could be a three-hour conversation, because there's a lot of details, but thank you very much, and the community really appreciates it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, Winesoff, Second Bragman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And now we move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is one that actually takes place within 500 feet of my house, so I need to recuse, but it is discussion and consideration of design and route options regarding the school bike spine project. And maybe Garrett wants to announce it, or do you want to lead the discussion on this? So I'll--
Sure.
This is the bike spine, I got to move to the audience here.
Sure, just as a little background, you know, you discussed this in May, the bike spine, some neighbors had indicated that they hadn't received a notice regarding the route. They had concerns about stop signs at some of the intersections. In May, we did have the traffic engineer, David Preasey, here to talk about the different options. Council at that time did ask David to go back, Mr. Preasey to go back and explore other options. We did attach his staff, his memo to the staff report, and then rather than staff going through what his findings are, it'd probably be appropriate to ask Mr. Preasey to come up here, and if he'd be willing to share what his findings were related to the council's questions.
Come on up, David.
So I think the last time we met was on May 1st, and at that meeting, we talked about the options for the bike routing, particularly inbound bike routing for the school bike spine. And at that point in time, we'd been looking at, what was the recommendation for hallway stop sign control at Arroyo and Scenic. At the meeting, we also talked about an option of not having stop signs on Scenic at that location, and an alternative measure, instead of prohibiting parking on the south side of the street, just east and west of Arroyo, so that sightlines could be maintained to provide safe movements and safe sight distance between bicyclists, taking a left turn from Arroyo onto Scenic and approaching motorists on Scenic as well. At the meeting, you asked me to take a closer look to understand if that option was pursued, how much parking would need to be removed, and I did determine that we'd need to stripe red curbs or prohibit parking about 50 feet in each direction on the south side of Scenic, east and west of Arroyo. I brought some little pictures I put together, and there's extra if anybody else in the audience wants these. There's some extra right here. So there's two preserved paper, I copied on both sides. And on one side, you'll see Scenic at Arroyo. And on the top of that side of paper, you'll, we're looking to the east on the bottom, looking to the west. And I kind of superimposed a little red line at each location that's showing where if there was no stop signs at this location where parking would need to be prohibited. If you look to the east, that's where the bridge crosses the creek. And so about two parking area for about two cars would need to be restricted for parking. And on the bottom photo, that's looking to the west and again, without stop signs, parking for about two vehicles, which is between Arroyo and 39 Scenic Road, their driveway. Parking there would need to be prohibited. I did spend some additional time out in the field looking at other options too and went down the street and looked at the idea of, well, what if the route, the inbound route was modified to actually have bicycle riders ride along Sequoia instead and then take a left turn onto Scenic? I would not recommend stop sign control at that location because this is too darn close to the Manor Road intersection, which has always stop control. But there's still, at this intersection would also be sight distance issues because there are no stop signs at the Scenic approaches to Sequoia. So if this alternate route was used instead, we would also recommend parking prohibitions on the south side of Scenic, on both east and west of Sequoia. On the top photo, you see a red line that shows where parking would be prohibited. Actually, it would only prohibit about one car in this location because the next space over where the red line is shown is actually a driveway to 72 Sequoia. And in the bottom photo, it's looking to the west and this again, the bicyclists will be looking in that direction, trying to take a left turn. And this would require two parking places to be restricted from parking in front of 75 Sequoia, although there'd still be parking just past that where the red line stops to the west. There's another space available there between that, that point in the existing driveway. I do want to mention that if the route was reconfigured to follow Sequoia instead of Arroyo, a few things, we would still recommend signing and striping along Scenic approaching Arroyo because I do believe bicyclists would still exit at Arroyo and take a left onto Scenic because it is the more direct route once things are signed and striped. Taking a route along Sequoia would require two extra turns for bicyclists, a left turn and a right turn. And then also, Sequoia itself is a very narrow street with parking on the east side of the street. It has a very high crown on the roadway, meaning the center of the street is pretty high compared to the curb sides. The installation of the green shared lane use arrows, which will occur along the entire school bike spine route along Sequoia, if it's along Sequoia, would be right in the center of the street for bicyclists heading northbound. So that concludes my report, including some additional options. Questions of David?
David, I was just wondering, with the parking prohibition at the intersection of Arroyo and Scenic, is that taking out the stop sign that was recommended earlier?
Yeah, that would be in lieu of always stops or stop signs along Scenic. Again, what we're trying to do is make sure that bicyclists going along this designated route to school, that there's clear, that it's as safe as possible when bicyclists are maneuvering through intersections. There are no stop signs at the Scenic, Scenic approaches to Arroyo today. Sightlines are very difficult for bicyclists maneuvering out of there with the approaching vehicles along Scenic. So if stop signs, which were the original proposal to provide the most safe condition, if stop signs were not installed, we'd recommend parking prohibitions along the south side of Arroyo so that there's really good sight distance between a cyclist trying to take a left turn from Arroyo onto Scenic and any approaching vehicles from both sides of Scenic. And prohibiting parking would allow adequate sight lines.
So without notwithstanding, notwithstanding the reaction of the neighborhood, which we are going to be listening to and is an important part of what our decision's going to be, is, do you have any opinion as to whether the intersection of Arroyo and Scenic or Sequoia and Scenic, whether either one of them is just a safer intersection for bicyclists to make that left turn?
Well, under their current conditions?
No, no. Let's say we do parking restriction, whatever parking restriction is needed. What I'm driving at is there's a stop sign a block closer to the intersection with Sequoia, so presumably the cross traffic is moving a little bit slower with less momentum that these bicyclists are going to be taking a left turn in front of. So I'm just wondering whether Sequoia may, the cross traffic condition at the intersection of Sequoia is any safer than it would be at Scenic?
You know, we didn't measure any of the approach speeds at either location. I imagine though, based on your observations and as well as mine, the Scenic location could be, could be safer for bicyclists emerging.
The Sequoia?
I mean, Sequoia.
Sequoia.
So however, keep in mind that it is a, it's not as direct of an inbound route for the bicyclists and Sequoia is narrower effective width for the bicyclists as well. That said, there's still a lot of bicycles that are already using Sequoia, you know, coming in the northbound direction. So, you know, if we're looking at purely just intersection safety, I think Sequoia would be, would be safer. However, I do believe that there still will be bicyclists egressing at Arroyo because it's the more direct route. So, you know, it's six of one, half dozen of another.
Did we notify the homeowners on the corner of Sequoia and Scenic?
Yes.
Of this meeting?
We sent notices out five or two feet around the intersections of Sequoia, Scenic and Arroyo and Scenic.
Okay. So everybody's been notified that one way or another, somebody's about to lose some parking.
Well, we sent them a notice of this meeting.
David, and I have had conversations with three quarter, three quarters of the neighbors that abut that intersection at Sequoia.
So I did want to add one other thing too, as I mentioned before, you know, if Sequoia is the location where parking prohibitions occur, because we do believe bicyclists would still, you know, egress at Arroyo, I just wanted to repeat, we recommend signing and striping, you know, for motorists approaching Arroyo from Scenic, that there's, you know, potential bicyclists crossing or slows, you know, slow kind of markings.
And I would see that as just an added bonus because if we don't choose it as the designated route, it would be great to have that signage and striping anyway, at all, at all costs for, you know, anyone traveling that route, which is a great number of bikers. So, yeah, thank you.
David, I guess my question is, you said six of one, half dozen of another. But you're the PhD of this stuff.
I'm not a PhD.
The proverbial PhD of this stuff. Naturally, we're going to hear from the community and we want their thoughts, but theirs is driven by their lives, their property, their, all those things that are extremely, extremely important. You don't live here or you don't live on those corners. And I got to know from you, if it was your kid traveling to school every day, which one?
You know, I really can't give you a recommendation one way or the other on this because we got three different, you know, the initial, the initial recommendation was always stop control, which we, I still believe at Arroyo would be the safest condition. Because we don't have to worry about somebody blowing through, you know, Scenic, missing, you know, I think the always stop control would be the safest at, at Arroyo. Comparing Arroyo and Scenic, I mean, Arroyo and Sequoia, just for restricting parking, like I said before, I think Scenic could be, Scenic at Sequoia, as Larry said, could potentially be as safer as an intersection, but I still think we'll have bicyclists coming through Arroyo at Scenic. So that's why I'm struggling myself with, under these conditions, with restricting parking, which one would be a better, better solution? So I wish I could have a more definitive response that one is, you know, better than the other as far as parking restrictions. It's a tough call, yeah.
With that, let's hear from the public. And David, hang around. From the mountaintop, you're going to Oak Pine.
Sierra, 23th man of you. I've ridden my bikes to school with my kids for years on all kinds of routes and I really don't like Arroyo. It might, I mean, I hear you say Arroyo is wider and has more visibility somehow, but to me effectively riding on the streets, it doesn't feel that way to me. Sequoia feels a lot more open. Arroyo feels a lot more closed down. There's, I guess there's a creek on the right side and driveways and cars parked on the left side. And if you meet a car on Arroyo, there's really not room for a bicycle, at least on Sequoia. Sequoia is, Arroyo is a two-way street. A one-way, one-lane road posing as a two-way, two-lane street, whereas Sequoia actually is a two-lane, two-way street and there is more width on it, even if there are cars parked on both sides. And I just feel like there's a lot more visibility from riding it all the time. I'd say it's like, go out and ride, go out and ride the route and see.
Other members of the community?
Yes, I guess, you got these photographs? I, it seems to me that I read in the paper that this item had to do with the bike paths. And I don't know, I don't understand a lot of things he was saying about changing all the street designs and everything. But anyway, the pictures that I gave you are, show the Olima Road and Sir Francis Drake intersection. And the first picture that shows that sign, as you approach that intersection, that sign is an obstacle that was just put in there within the last few weeks. It's a Bradley Realty sign. And I don't know who approved that location and why it was put there because it just does belong there. You can't see down the street now and you can't see the bicycles coming that way and the cars. So if you look at one of the other photographs, you'll see that the car that's parked right, that's stopped right in front of the bike path, that's where you have to go to look down Sir Francis Drake to see if there's any cars coming. And it's a very, very dangerous situation because a lot of the bikers, most of the bikers use that bike path, but they don't stop at the stop sign that was installed for them.
Lou, let me just hold on for a minute. Mark, you have a thought?
Yeah, if that's a Realty sign, that's just a directional sign, that's not allowed. They're only allowed in front of the residence that's for sale, so we can pull that.
Well, let's give them a call and pull it. So there you go. But Lou, we're a little bit more down the block on this and in this particular discreet area of Scenic and dealing with kids, you know, and the, and the bike route. So I understand what you're talking about, larger picture, but right now, we're sort of zeroing in on a, on a very small intersection or two. But we'll take care of it.
Well, it's not only the sign, it's the, the whole design of the intersection. As you can see by that picture that I show, with the car where he had to go to look down the street, there's also two limit, limit lines for the stop sign as you look at the picture. And you, you can't stop at those limit lines because you can't see down the street.
I know what you're talking about, but I have to tell you that this agenda item is on a particularly small little area of Scenic Road, not, not the larger picture. I know exactly what you're talking about and you're exactly right, but that's not what we're allowed to talk about under this agenda thing.
Okay, I won't talk about it anymore, but I think the Independent is putting the wrong stuff in the paper. They definitely said they wanted, you wanted comments on the bike paths.
I'm shocked that it's gambling.
You know.
Lou, we have, we, there is, there is a Public Safety Committee, Traffic Safety Committee that actually does meet once in a while for the town. So I think, you know, your comments are well, well-directed at us to take a look at it, but it's not really what we're looking at tonight.
Let's, please give it to, Lou, Lou, could you, could you give it to Mark? Give, give the pictures and stuff to Mark so that we can have it in front of our Public Safety, our Traffic Safety Committee, which includes the police chief.
Yeah, no, we will look at it.
Well, I would, what I would like to do, I'd like to say that the bike path is in the wrong place coming through the library. And my wife almost hit two little kids one day. She got up to that intersection and the mother was ahead of the little children that were riding on the two bikes in back of her. And my wife saw the mother go by, she didn't see the two little kids, and she moved up to look down Sir Francis Drake and the two little kids drove right in front of her. They almost got hit by my wife. So.
We will, we will look at this intersection. We will look at this.
And I think, just as a suggestion, I think that they should eliminate the bike path going through the library and let the bikers go across by St. Rita's where they have a school crossing there, where they can stop the traffic and let the school kids go across there and come up the bike path on the other way.
Right. And this particular project directs kids further west, so they, they would not be coming out at that problematic intersection.
Right, right. They should go across where they have a, a school guard there and they can press the button and stop the traffic.
And that's where we're trying to direct them with the bike spine, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other folks who want to comment on this? Sir?
Good evening, Malcolm Fearon, 30 Scenic Road. I think you can see clearly from the photographs here and echoing the first speaker's comments about the, the amount of light that's on Arroyo and the width of the road. I think it's a lot more unsafe than the option on Sequoia. If you go down either, either road, you will see that the visibility and the space for bikes is a lot greater on Sequoia than on Arroyo. Arroyo has the creek and there's a lot of foliage there. And if you actually stand in that street and look, there's not enough space for cars and bikes to use the street at the same time. And I think he, David mentioned the stop signs might be the safest, safest option, but I think also, and he also mentioned that he hadn't done any survey on approaching speeds. And I think if you take approaching speeds coming down the hill on Scenic, it'll make it really difficult to have a stop sign that's enforceable there for cyclists and for car drivers. I've also been thinking and watching cyclists, the way they travel, and the last speaker said, a lot of cyclists go up and cross Sir Francis Drake near the library. And there might be an option there to, instead of having people come down Arroyo in the first place, to send them around on Spruce and then take a right on Azalea and a left towards the library. And to make that route safer, you could eliminate right turns on the library entrance and Azalea between 7:00 and 9:00 in the mornings. So then they wouldn't have to deal with any traffic coming down those roads and it would be a safer route for the kids to go that way. And there's already a crossing guard on Sir Francis Drake at that point, and that would be a safer route with less intersections to send the kids to school.
Sir?
Yeah, I promise I'm a little calmer than the last time. My solution to the whole thing would be a stop sign on Arroyo coming out onto Scenic and then another one down the street if you're going to pull off Sequoia. There's already one on the Sequoia side pulling on the Scenic. There's nothing right now on Arroyo that says you have to stop there. People coming off Arroyo look a little bit, but they don't really stop if they don't have to. The traffic is unbelievably fast on Scenic Road, especially rush hours. We've had very few kids coming by, riding their bikes to school in the morning down Arroyo. They're down further, I think. So the stop sign there would be just crazy for the mountain bikers, everybody that comes up and rides up through the parks. Just doesn't make sense to me what you want to do and the cost that it would Just doesn't make sense to me what you want to do and the cost that it would be involved to do it.
So is your, are you recommending the Sequoia-Scenic?
Sequoia-Scenic, it'd be fine to block this bridge off for parking, I think. So people coming off and making a right turn on Scenic can see better. But it's a very, you know, we've got a lot of old oak trees and redwood trees and everything else along that street. You're not going to be able to cut that down to make it clear for everyone.
I'm just unclear. Are you favoring the Arroyo option or the Sequoia option?
Sequoia option, I think would be much better and easier. It's a flat area. At the bottom of Scenic, as you come, wherever this problem is, is where they go up or down the hill. If you're coming down the hill, you're not going to stop to go down a quarter-mile flat area. You're going to go as much, as fast as you can on a bike to get all the speed so you can coast up the flat part. If you're coming the other way, you're not going to stop at the bottom of a hill, get your breath and then ride up the hill. You want all the speed coming down Scenic Road to coast up the hill. And it's not a very, it's two houses wide, the hill. Not a real big thing, but it's, I've lived there for 35 years. I know how the traffic is. I've been, you know, every day I see it. And I've seen accidents happen, not from bicyclers, but I've seen bicyclers hit from people on Scenic Road that are coming, you know, everybody tries to pass on the same spot going up or down the hill. And needs some speed enforcement is what we really need on that street. And that's, I think, our biggest problem. People are going too fast for the area that it is. And that's a big detriment to bicyclers. That's all I have to say. So it's in your hands.
Hello again.
I, I just kind of took a quick look at it and I wasn't involved in your conversation last week. But I currently live on Spruce in, in that Scenic three-way right there. And people don't stop at stop signs, but, on bikes. And hopefully I can teach my kid to. But I definitely would be in favor, after looking at it, of the Sequoia stop, three-way stop there. I think that's huge. There's already a stop sign there. And I think, I think slowing down, that would be great. I think putting a stop sign at Arroyo would be, is just as much of a waste of time as the stop sign is right now between Spruce and Scenic. People just blow through it. So definitely a stop sign on Arroyo facing north, what is that, northwest? So coming from Arroyo onto Scenic would be a great place to have a stop sign. And I think parking alongside the creek is kind of, I don't know, not necessary. They can park in front of my house, as far as I'm concerned. But that's just, I guess, my two cents on that. The other thing, and I don't know if this has been consideration, a speed bump somewhere in the mix. Okay. No problem. So, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other folks want to join in the conversation? Oh, thank you. All right, then I'll close the public here and bring it back. Renee?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, mention one other thing. And that is that if we were to use the Sequoia-Scenic intersection, my recommendation would be, and Mr. Parisi has recommended, that we take out that parking at Sequoia on the, on the east, on the southeast side. But I would, I would recommend that we would restrict that parking and prohibit parking between seven and nine on, on weekdays. So that we handle this and we keep it in the, in the frame of that it is a bicycle route to school. And then we wouldn't be causing quite so much pain to neighbors who are used to parking in those spots.
Although most likely that would mean they will not be able to park there overnight unless they get an early jump in the morning.
That, that is a, yeah.
Small.
But then weekends, they would have that.
Okay. Oh, good point. Well, that's a good point. The one thing, can I ask you? I, I mean, I, we haven't seen anybody from Sequoia right there arrive. And so I'm taking it that they know that this is on the agenda.
They were noticed and the people I spoke to know it was on the agenda. There hasn't been any problem in.
They didn't have a thought on this?
Not so much. I did not talk to one of the neighbors, which was on the, the west, the southwest side.
I bet you we will. Okay.
I have, I have a question for David, which is when, when a cyclist would take the left off Arroyo onto, what's, what's the connector street to Sequoia?
Azalea.
Azalea? How, how, how do you rate the hazard of oncoming traffic on Arroyo? Because these kids are going to be making a left in front of oncoming traffic, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's a little kink in the road. And also, it's Azalea that has the downhill.
Yeah, that would be a stop sign, am I correct?
That's recommended to be a stop sign.
Yeah.
So, you know, that.
A stop at that intersection?
Yeah, at Azalea and Arroyo.
Right.
Both ways?
No, just for the downhill, coming down Azalea.
Okay, okay. So what I'm talking about is, is, is Arroyo just a one-way road?
It's a two-way road.
Okay, so I'm just saying, the kids are still going to be taking a left turn.
Yes.
In front of oncoming traffic. Admittedly, Arroyo's, I don't think is that heavily trafficked.
Right, and there's, there's, there's good sight distance there.
Okay, okay.
And there's a little bit of kink in the road, you know, as kids are riding northbound on Arroyo, they have to kind of veer a little bit to the right as they're passing Azalea. So signage and everything works out pretty well, would work out pretty well.
And then, then would we have one of those torch downs sort of steering the kids through that intersection?
Yeah, we redesigned the plans for the inbound, the two-school route to take that left and then.
So that would give somewhat of a clue to oncoming traffic?
Absolutely.
Two, okay.
Yeah, and also what we've done for the entire route is identify for drivers that are coming, that are about to cross the school bike spine, you know, school route ahead. There's some signage, so they, they understand they're about to enter the school bike route.
That Arroyo roadway there is also, it is narrow. I never see people passing each other very quickly there. In fact, I don't think I've ever seen cars pass each other on that roadway.
Yeah, I mean, they're both narrow. I mean, Arroyo and Sequoia are both narrow. I mean, Sequoia has the parking on, on the one side and.
It just has the sight lines.
Yeah. And believe me, I hate to be the guy here saying that we need to prohibit parking or put up stop signs, but it's all in the name of child safety along this route. We're trying to offer some suggestions.
Absolutely. You have to sign off on it, don't you? At some.
That's correct.
We're looking, we're looking for your seal of approval, so.
I do have to sign off for a seal.
Yeah, so that's important, for sure. I mean, that, that was the whole point of the project, actually.
Right.
So.
So with that in mind.
Yeah, I would like to move that, that we approve the route which takes us down Spruce, left on Arroyo, left on Azalea, right on Scenic, I mean, right on Sequoia, and left onto Scenic. And that we, and that we restrict the parking at Sequoia and Scenic from seven to nine on weekdays. Yeah.
So that is just my clarification. This one. The Sequoia.
Sequoia-Scenic intersection.
It's that conversation.
It's that conversation.
Okay. We have a.
Could I, could I, could I offer one other thing? I heard some residents also say that they would actually support some prohibition on Scenic just east of Arroyo, across the bridge, in conjunction.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
And it could, it could increase the sight lines, particularly for the drivers coming down the hill.
On the bridge?
Yes.
In front of the bridge, not in front of the home?
Right where the VW van is in this photograph.
Not across the street?
Right.
Just the one side?
Just the one side.
Just the one, yeah, yeah.
And with the striping and the signage at Arroyo, yeah.
As well, but not, again, we're not trying to do any sign pollution, just to provide enough warning.
Yeah.
You know? Just the motorists.
Okay.
Okay, because I know that the, he was here, I'm not sure if the gentleman is still here. But, God, on the Looking West, Arroyo-Scenic picture, on the bottom, that gentleman is concerned about the loss, oh, he's right behind you, is, is concerned about the loss of the parking there. Thirty-nine, right? So we're not looking at that, we're looking at the parking across wherever the van is. Okay.
Yeah.
Seven to nine AM, Monday through Friday. And with that, Michelle?
Can I speak as a member of the public?
Absolutely.
I ride this route every day, to and from work, four times. And I hadn't heard about the seven to nine restriction before. But I don't know, it's because of the children riding it earlier? What about in the afternoons?
Good point.
When they come home?
The sight line is different on the, on the return.
But actually, because I live in that neighborhood and often drive through it, also in my car when I have to go somewhere, as a car driver, it's hard to see kids coming from White Hill and Manor on that bike route if you're at Sequoia.
If you're at Sequoia.
In your car. And you, and their car's parked, you can't see the kids coming from the left. And I, I would think it would be safer all the time. As an intersection, or at least one, I don't know. And it's less complicated.
Can I ask you a question? What about even on weekends?
Well.
Because you're going to have fewer.
On weekends, you have a lot of the recreational cyclists, so, yeah. I, I mean, I would just, to make it a safe intersection, not have parking in the sight lines if you're not going to have stop signs. Not, I mean, not that I want stop signs. But I just think a safe intersection involves no cars blocking your sight lines.
Yeah, no, I had not considered the cars waiting at Sequoia to turn onto Scenic.
I like to ride my bike everywhere in town if I don't have to drive my car and.
Let me ask, Renee, do you wish to amend your motion?
Yes, I, I mean, I absolutely see your point. I'm not quite sure the numbers that we'd be accommodating in terms of drivers going that direction versus taking out people's parking permanently. That's my only reservation. But you're right, if we're going to take, if we're going to make the safest decision, that is a safer decision. So I will amend my movement.
Your motion.
That's the one.
Larry, do you accept the amended?
No, I, I, I agree with them. I agree with the amendment.
Okay, with that, I think we, all in favor?
Hold on one second. So are we talking about, we're, the consensus is to take the sight line parking out at Scenic seven days a week. Do we feel the same way at, rather, at Sequoia? Do we feel the same way about the parking at Arroyo?
Yes, I would say so.
Okay. Okay, just the east side, then?
Yeah.
We're good. That's the understanding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take a break?
Maybe one quick question. So is, are you clear on what the council direction was? Because we're going to need guidance on the change order to the.
Yeah, it's very clear to me. We're just, we're doing three out of the four red lines.
Right.
And the plans need to be revised to change the inbound route down Azalea to Sequoia. And then provide the red curb striping or signage, whatever it makes sense for the environment here, as well as provide additional warning for the folks going westerly on Scenic as they're approaching Arroyo.
Correct.
Give some warning for potential bike crossings.
Got it? Okay, let's take five.
Before we adjourn, I want to thank you, David.
Oh, you're welcome.
For putting in so much time and energy on this thing.
Thanks.
And I really hope it turns into what we all want it to be. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
All right. Okay, so we're back. Next up is regular agenda item number 19, which is discussing and considering options for the Pastory Outfall Pipe and Bank Stabilization Project. Garrett, do you want to lead us off or?
Sure. As background, you know, the town has been considering trying to stabilize and repair the Rota Creek Bank in San Soma Creek near Pastory Bridge. That project consisted also of replacing Storm drain pipe, 24-inch with a 40-inch pipe. In August 2012, the council actually bid it out, but then decided due to cost and unforeseen other circumstances to stop that project. At your last May meeting, you actually talked about the project again with the idea of trying to get a fresh start, see what to do. At that meeting, council did raise various questions regarding status of permitting, removal of the tree on the bank, financing plan, and a question as to the adjacent property owner related to insurance. Staff did some research, our consultants researched things. And what we found is the permits from the outside agencies are still valid. Army Corps permits valid until June 2014. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife, their permit actually expires in December 2013. We'll actually have to extend that permit if we want to construct the project in 2014. Environmental clearances are still valid. Building official contact to contractors indicated they can do the work without removing the trees. Staff's working on a financing plan, although we just recently heard from FEMA that the money is still available. If we actually can complete construction by November 2013, that'd be about $49,000. Some of the other factors are, the adjacent property owners are here also to answer any questions. And what we did was, we came back and modified the options we presented to you last meeting. Before, we had four options. One was temporary improvements. Our understanding is the, the permitting agencies wouldn't allow temporary improvements. So we actually switched it back to really have three options before you. Well, four if you decide to do nothing. But first option is rebid the project. It's previously just with bank stabilization only, not the pipe. This has all the permits. It's actually lowest cost, we think about $200,000. This actually has the best probability of being completed by October 15th, by when we have to complete all the work beyond the creek. It is eligible for FEMA money. Kind of a drawback is obviously it doesn't address flooding in the neighborhood. And also, we'll probably need some special council meetings just to move forward to all the different contracts we're going to have to approve and so on related to the project. Your possible barriers are you're still going to need some right-of-entry from the adjacent property owners. And it'll be dissimilar to the ones they've signed before for the project, but we need to make clear that they can't make it irrevocable during the construction period. Otherwise, you could be staging, spending money, and then if they say no, then you've spent all this money without doing a project. Option B is bringing the project with the original pipe replacement and bank stabilization component. That actually has its clearance and permit. It addresses the flooding. It has some economies of scale because you're putting in the pipe now. Main delay, obviously, the, one of the property owners who indicates it is breached does not want the work done on the bridge, the pipe, unless he has a different insurances related to that work. It is a little more expensive, but most likely there's no way you'd be able to begin that project until next year, which means you would have to get all your new permits, all your permits extended. And obviously, you would help to have the cooperation of property owners. And then option C, which we did explore, was trying to realign the pipe with the bank stabilization component. That's the most costly. Again, you need all permits, all environmental clearances required. There's no way you'd be able to begin that till next year, that'd be the best-case scenario. And for that one, you actually would need the approval of the one property owner with the permits because the pipe would be on her property. So with that, that pretty much concludes the staff report. I think we're just looking for a direction of how to proceed with this project.
Well, thank you. They're all expensive options, but we need to deal with a number of issues in that neighborhood. And I mean, there's 100 houses that flood that is where this project originated. Are there questions or comments from?
How are we going to pay for this? Outside of the 50K from FEMA's coffers, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, that's, that's limited. There could be a series of loans. We can approach adjacent cities, see if they'd be willing to participate. And so what would happen is, depending on what you decided to do, then we would go and try to finalize how we would ultimately pay for this project. Your worst-case scenario is if you qualify. Your worst-case scenario is, if you qualify for the FEMA money, that's forty-nine thousand dollars, and then the rest you would have to fill with general fund reserves to pay for the project. I mean, that's worst-case scenario. Other scenarios, you get a loan, and then it'd be slowly paid over time.
And Garrett, why, why would we be unable to do the original plan this year, of just putting the pipe through the wing wall?
Part of that...
I mean, all the permits are there, we would just have to rebid it, wouldn't we?
Well, yes, you would have to rebid it. I think the issue would be, what contention is the property owner's permission to put the larger pipe through the wing wall of the bridge?
And what I'm not really understanding, and what I'd like to find out from council at some point, is when you have an encroachment into, into a public right-of-way, and that encroachment is impeding the public's use of its right-of-way, doesn't the public have a right to, to use its right-of-way as, as it's legally entitled to do, which would entail changing the encroachment? And my second question is whether the encroachment that is there on Pastory was permitted. I suppose it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, so maybe I've answered my own question, but I, I think really the question is, you know, what's, what's a town do when you've got a property owner that has a construction, a building, or otherwise, that's impeding the public's use of its right-of-way? So, that's a question I think we need to address at some point, even if we don't address it this summer.
And, and we are prepared to look into that for you and give you a written response on that.
Okay, I would really appreciate it, because the more I think about it, you know, the wing wall is actually impeding the right-of-way. And it seems to me, from the testimony I've heard from the engineers, there's, there's really no factual basis for the obstruction. We heard testimony last week from an engineer who's done this type of project numerous times successfully. The project is cross-insured at least three ways, maybe four, if we could get some numbers or some specification from Michael. But, boy, it would be nice to get this all done in, in one, in one project. So, that's my start.
Renee, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm there, and I can understand your thinking there. I mean, it's, I mean, this, this project's been going on now nearly a decade, if you count the start of the, the, the pipe, and then it wasn't finished, and, and now we're trying to patch it up. And it's so much money has been spent on this already, just trying to figure out a way around it, and I think that's the crux of the matter, right there. You know, and nobody's itemized how much money it's cost, but, you know, it's probably getting close to half a million dollars. And this is the public's money, that should be going to all sorts of projects around town. And to have it hung up on nervousness of whether something bad might happen, I mean, basically, it's, it's, it's not brain surgery. I mean, obviously, there's some unknowns, because you dig a hole in the ground and somebody, you know, everybody who built it was dead, a hundred years old, or whatever it is. So, you know, we just have to go forward and trust that our engineers can, can do it. And that really is what we need to do, is work together and trust that we can go at this together. I agree with you, Larry, that it would be good to do it all at once. I think it's gonna be a lot more expensive to do the bank stabilization initially, I guess it's Plan A here, which just does a little piece of it, I mean, it helps Wendy O'Rear's property in that it deals with that right-of-way. But to do that, you have to deal with the fish in the creek and do all the remediation then, that you just have to turn around and do again the next year, spending that money to do that over again. That, that really doesn't make sense to me. I think we need to act in the public's interest all the way around, solve the flooding issue for the hundred houses, deal with the stream bank, and, you know, basically, make a secure way for this pipe to go through the wing wall. Or, you know, or if we spend more money than that, we can go around the wing wall, but once again, you don't really know, until you start digging a hole in the ground, exactly what's down, down there. So, the engineers seem to be clear on that.
Could I just, could I just add something? Because I was on the council when this thing originally came up. We, we were staged and ready to go when, when the project was halted by a threat of I believe by your attorney, Michael.
Can you clarify?
Well, you will when it comes time for public comment.
Yeah, but you keep making it into a statement.
You can correct me during public comment. This project was staged and ready to go, Gelati was out here, and the cost of the project was probably half of what it is now. Miss O'Rear's property was not in the shape it's in now. But the delay that's been caused by your obstruction has cost us a lot of money, and it's caused some damage.
You can speak corruptly here.
You know what, Michael, you're out of order, and I'm gonna ask the mayor to gavel you down. Because right now, I have a right to speak without interruption.
That's fair.
So, this town has incurred a lot of costs because of your obstruction, and now we're, we're dealing with it, it's a workaround of your obstruction, and frankly, I don't think there's a factual basis for your obstruction that the engineers can't address safely and routinely. And I don't know what our decision is gonna be tonight, but I just wanna make that statement for the record. Because I don't think it's a friendly position for you to take, I think it's a hostile position for you to take. And I think it's hurt our town, and it's hurt our community. So, we're gonna move ahead with some kind of direction tonight, I'm not sure what it's gonna be, but it's gonna be costly. And I, I'm sure we'll come to, to, to make a good decision, but, boy, oh, boy, this thing should've been done eight or nine years ago, Miss O'Rear's property would've been in better shape. The hundred homes that get occasionally flooded because of the deficiency in this outlet, in this pipe outlet, would be secured. So, I, I just don't see the, any community-minded spirit or cooperation. We asked you to provide some information about getting the bridge insured last month. You assured us you would get us that information, hasn't been forthcoming. That's not cooperation. So, that, that's my viewpoint of having watched this thing unfold over a number of years. And, you know, I'm gonna do my best to, to work through it. But unfortunately, it seems it's gonna be, you know, working around an obstruction that really, really is unnecessary, and has really cost us dearly. So, I don't know where this discussion goes from, from, from there, but I'm sure I'll hear from you when we open it up for public comment.
I have a question for you, for Larry. And I agree with everything you said, including the tone. And if we don't do A immediately, she could lose her property. And maybe we could take the gamble on B or C. But what happens if the type of obstruction we've enjoyed for the last X years finds its way in ways that, as attorneys you know, can often occur? And we don't get to go in there in year two, or year three, and the storms in the future rolls on, and we put her house at greater danger? As you know, I'm sort of a B and C advocate.
I think we all are.
We, we all are. But if we don't go for A immediately, I'm afraid of what happens to her property if we run into the kind of obstruction that we've suffered for the last X years.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the cooperation and the community-minded spirit that is professed by Michael, because I haven't seen it. So, I'm waiting for it. I, I expected to hear back with information about insurance, even though the project is gonna be cross-insured by the town of Fairfax, whoever does the construction, and the engineer who signs his wet stamp on it. But I was, I'm willing to, to cooperate with you and hear you out on, on what additional security you need, but, you know, I haven't heard anything. So, maybe when we get to public comment, you can, you can provide that information that you promised you would provide at our last meeting. So I think where we go is gonna depend on that, because, hey, we, we have an obstruction that we need to deal with legally, properly. And that's how we deal with things in our town. But I gotta tell you, it's obviously been frustrating.
Well, I guess the frustration is more than apparent all the way here. Yeah, I mean, we're, we've gotta fix this right, and we've also gotta use the public's money in the most efficient way possible. And to an extent, I would like to think that we're not gambling, but in some ways, we kind of are, depending on how, how it goes and what attitudes others have. Is there a general feeling for one option rather than another, or should we...
Could I, I mean, I don't mean to jump in. I, I think we should open it up for public comment. We need to hear from Michael McIntosh about what, what he's willing to do, whether he's willing to cooperate with us or not. And I think, I, I'd like to hear from him, I know he'd like to respond to my comments, but I, I'd like to hear from him and hear what he's got to say, and, and we can sort of fold that into our conversation.
Well, yeah. I think you're right, because we can't make an informed decision without knowing. So I'd like to open it up to public comment this time.
I would like to speak as well, but who would you like to have come first? No, I can tell that I'm out of order, it doesn't matter.
I'm sorry?
Who would you like to speak first? I wish I had a minute.
Whoever makes it to the podium first gets to speak first.
I wanted to read a little bit from the biological opinion from the agencies, I just, it's not gonna take long. We have some new people on the council, so I thought it might be a good thing. This is from June fourth, two thousand and twelve. Biological opinion from the agencies. The town of Fairfax, through the governor's office of the California Emergency Management Agency, was approved for funding by the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Program to replace the storm drain, storm-damaged Pastory Avenue storm drain. When the storm drain outfall was damaged in oh-five and oh-six, storm water began to be discharged directly onto the bank, resulting in erosion of the stream bank. To protect, protect the bridge and the adjacent residents from further bank erosion during the disaster event, the town placed emergency rock riprap on the eroded bank. However, as there is no vegetation on the eroded bank of the creek channel and the bank continues to erode, the culvert outlet needs to be replaced and the bank stabilized to prevent another bank failure immediately downstream from this project. And there's reference to some JARPA document. Sorry, I get a little nervous up here. For this project, minimal amounts of stream bed and bank will be disturbed, and the project will stabilize an actively eroding bank. And then the California Department of Fish and Game Stream Bed Alteration Agreement said, "The existing storm drain pipe is undersized and produces high-velocity discharges onto the bank during large rain events." And there's also a comment about the undersized discharge producing outflows to the creek at eroding velocities. So these are the reasons I'm asking the council to protect the bank at my home prior to next winter. These are the reasons. And then I just have a few comments about the cost, because, and I did reach out to Garrett, and he responded to me. The construction contract from last year was eighty-six thousand dollars, and the fish relocation originally was quoted at sixty thousand, but then there was a letter from Alice Rich that she copied me on, reducing that to twenty-six to thirty thousand dollars. And the town, that was a letter to the town. And the CSW cost from last year was fifteen thousand, as far as I knew, that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Less FEMA funds of forty-nine, that's a net of eighty-two. So there's a, the delta between the one-thirty that I'm quoting and the two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty K estimate in option A is seventy to a hundred and twenty thousand. Garrett said that was for construction management, bird surveys, inflation, and contingencies. So it seems like, you know, maybe it would come in a little bit under, maybe, you know, maybe not quite as expensive as it sounds. And I also thought last year that the funds had been set aside, I remember you guys requesting the funds be set aside, but I'm, of course, not involved in your finances. So, I'm urging the council to bifurcate the project, to use the FEMA money, which is only good through the end of this year, to offset the cost of having to de-water the creek twice, to do the project twice. Because the stabilization would set, it sets up the stream bank in the way you need it to be set up to enlarge the pipe through the wing wall. I just think that that, enlarging it through the wing wall is gonna take longer, and I'm caught in the middle of this, and it's not a good place to be. And I don't know if you'd have to renew your stream bed alteration permit if you stabilized the bank this year and enlarged the wing wall next year. I'm not sure on that, but maybe you wouldn't have to. So, I'm urging the council to take the advice that Greg, the engineer, gave last month, and he said, "If I were you, I would deal with the immediate need, the bank stabilization, there's a dynamic situation out there, and it's changing. And this would also reduce the town's financial liability." So please protect the bank from the inevitable further damage next winter. Thank you.
Larry, I'll address these comments to you. First off, for your reaching out for the community, that's a false statement. I've asked you for over six years if we could ever sit down and talk about this, six years. Even Gary Raggiante has also tried to set something up, and you have refused. When I've reached out to John, he's been present. I've reached out to David, he's been present. You have refused. As for, excuse me, this is my turn, it's time for him to gavel you down. Any project I've offered, you have refused, even with bringing a mutual friend such as Gary Raggiante, that I hope you have respect for, even he is disappointed by that. As for cooperative and spirit of our community, I offered to give this council my bridge and the land it sits on for free, so we would even net a new fish ladder, but you were afraid that somehow that could help me. That's not cooperation, that's break your nose, spite your face. The fact that we have possibly spent five hundred thousand dollars, when in fact, if you accepted the bridge for free, you'd be paid two to three hundred thousand dollars to oversee the administration and grant, that's malfeasance. The initial study that was filed, I'd be pleased to take that court, should, of course you would like to be, because it was illegally filed, is improper, it made statements in there that were knowingly false, and you're outside of your CECL compliance for the prior project and what was presented in initial study. I think that's enough. Anytime that you'd like to meet with me and discuss this, it'd be a pleasure, but after six years of refusal, please do not make false statements like this in the general public. It's embarrassing for our officials.
Go ahead.
You know, I generally have made it a policy not to meet with developers off the record, and I think it's a pretty good policy. I like to deal with developers and landowners that are gonna benefit by the expenditure of public funds in public, so that the public hears the conversation. of public funds in public, so that the public hears the conversation. As far as us being outside of SEQA compliance, I don't know if you're referring to this project. If you are, that certainly sounds like you're going to oppose the project and oppose our ability to even go forward on the bifurcated project, because we're going to need your cooperation to do the bifurcated project, because we may need the permission from you to enter on your property, to put some equipment on it, to do the project. So are you, are you willing to cooperate in that regard?
Community of working together, do you remember when you were running for your election and you came on my property, you broke approximately eight laws by inserting illegally your flyers for your benefit into my open mailboxes for my tenants, trying to promote your agenda? If you recall, I had to actually request Fairfax PD to speak to you about that, so you would not do that again. So please, if you'd like to speak about community working together, I would love the opportunity to sit down, but let's please be honest.
Michael, I have no, I have no recollection of that, and if I was in my first campaign 10 years ago, that I dained to enter the, your property, to put First Amendment-protected political literature on the voters that live on that property, I don't think I ever did hear from the Fairfax Police about that, because I don't think I violated any law. And, you know, you're filling the record with personal attacks.
No, it's not. Jim Callahan, when he was still an officer, was one who spoke to you. The violations were you cannot put things into a mailbox without postage or that direction. This was not the place I want to bring this up, but please, if you'd like to address something and stick to the subject, fine. You want to try to insult me and say how I won't meet with you, that there's no community spirit, all you're going to do is further. In fact, even recently, when I asked you if you wanted to address this bridge, you refused to discuss it, and you said, "That boat has sailed."
Michael, what, what we're here to discuss tonight is, is...
I really don't want to discuss this with you further until you have a little bit more, let's say your presentation should be improved. Thank you.
Okay, could I just get back to the subject at hand?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to stay on the subject at hand.
Which is whether we're going to get cooperation to do the project or not? Not what I guess I'm being accused of having done 10 years ago, which I don't remember, and having the record filled with recollections that I, I do not concur with. I, I really would like to stay focused on, on the matter at hand, and I apologize for my presentation. I am very frustrated, as a public official, to sit up here and look at a budget of a project that's gone up three to four times, and I don't see a, really a factual basis other than a property owner's obstruction. So by all means, I apologize for my presentation. I would like to stay focused on this project and see what we can do tonight to get it, to get it resolved.
Larry, are we looking at ways to benefit the communities so that the water drains that community? If we are, which would be part of the SEQA requirement, why has the town not cleaned the culvert that goes parallel to Center Boulevard that drains that community and goes right by the large redwood tree underneath Center, so we can also offset some of the volume of water? Okay, another thing?
I don't know, I don't know that the town hasn't done that. I don't know that the culvert...
Well, I've watched it for a few years.
I don't know that the culvert needs cleaned.
Well, it's pretty overgrown.
What I know is that for the past 10 years, we've just been trying to put a pipe in the ground, and you've been obstructing the project.
Well, then, the last initial study that you guys filed, you didn't even have the benefit of sharing that with the community, let alone me. You said that you owned the improvement, so, you know, honestly, I really don't like the tone of your discussion here.
And, and I apologize for my tone.
So I really don't want to discuss this, and I would appreciate if you kept your discussions off and just do whatever you want to do, but you're not, you're not inviting me to a discussion. You've never shared with me. You've certainly never been somebody to say, "Let's do something with the property." You've never wanted to do anything that might benefit our community.
Yeah, I think it, it would help everybody to keep focused on what we're trying to do here, which is complete the pipe project, which basically keeps over 100 houses from flooding. And that project was stopped by a threat to sue a contractor 10 years ago, or eight years ago, I suppose it was. And that's water under the bridge, or whatever you want to call it. But what we're trying to do here is go forward, and the easiest way to go forward is to all work together to try to say, okay, trust the engineers, that they can put, do what they do, and that's design a pipe to go through a wing wall, it's a pretty simple thing. And, you know, whatever problems that they run into, they know how to deal with that type of problem. And, you know, we're going to dig a hole in the ground, we're going to put in a, a section of four-foot-wide pipe, we're going to reinforce where it bores through, where there's currently a two-foot hole through the wall with an aging pipe that's there, and that will basically enable the water to flow in the way that the rest of the pipe is all designed for it to flow. At that point in the creek, we need to protect Ms. O'Rear's property, which is immediately downstream of it and is eroding right now. Right now, you have a little pipe that's old. It's like putting your thumb on the end of a garden hose. It's spraying water out. Anybody who's played with mud pies in their yard as a kid probably understands that concept. But what we need to do forward is to work together so that we can get to the end of the road on this without throwing a wrench in the works.
Can I ask the manager a question? Under disadvantages of B, you have delays project to next year, and then flipping the page over, it says would be unlikely to begin project this year. Which one of those? One's unlikely to begin the project this year, and one is it delays the project to next year. If it's unlikely, unlikely is better than no. And...
I apologize for the inconsistency. I, I would say unless you have the cooperation of the property owner, I, I don't see there any way of starting the, putting the pipe through the wall and the bank stabilization this year.
Okay, so if, if we did have the cooperation of the property of, of Michael McIntosh, would we be able to trigger B and thereby get the holy grail of bank stabilization for Wendy, pipe to keep the folks from flooding, and merely spend an ungodly sum of money?
If we, we would definitely need some special council meetings and some other actions, but I think there's a possibility.
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Yeah, I will gladly come to a bunch of special council meetings.
Okay, I just want to finish up here. Michael, this is, this is...
I really don't want to discuss this.
Well, that was him.
Am I being polite?
Wait a minute, I'm being, wait, excuse me, whoa, whoa, whoa. Am I impolite? I'm not impolite.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Mayor, a suggestion would be, it's a little awkward with the discussion with the public, back, back and forth.
Okay, then I'll talk in the, in the objective sense, or in the hypothetical sense as the hour grows late. I guess we could take the leap into the proverbial dark, put the landowner to his professed desire to, to be a good neighbor, and see if we can hit a triple here by securing Wendy's property, getting the protection to the 100 homeowners from flooding, and, and get it done this year, because that's what B appears to say, as long as we receive the support of the property owner. Have I characterized this correctly?
So can I, can I just ask, because we don't really have any history, so I'm coming in as my third council meeting, I just want to, I just want to ask for the public to hear and for myself, what does that require to, to have the cooperation of the property owner? This is an unfueled question, in order to proceed, so that what I see out here after my third meeting is, is Ms. O'Rear, is that your correct last name, really asking, almost sort of pleading, "Can we, can we do this? I'm going to lose my, my, my land." I want to know what it would take, sort of A, B, C, to get this and to say, "Yes, let's go for A, let's go for B, and let's move." What is that cooperation? And I keep hearing obstruction, I keep hearing cooperation. What, what do we need in order to proceed?
So for option A, if the property owners can execute right-of-entries to allow us to do the work that we need to do, similar to the right-of-entries executed before, with the exception of being able to revoke it if we're starting the work, that's what we need for A.
Okay.
For B, you would also need right-of-entries. It's a little higher standard, though, because the property owner who's indicating that he owns the bridge has to give us his permission to work on his bridge, and that's the issue of contention. And for C, you may not need one of the adjacent property owners, but Ms. O'Rear would have to agree to a right-of-entry as well as a permit easement on her property for that pipe, and we really haven't gone to that level of detail yet of just how that would all work.
Okay, so are, can we just, without the emotional charge, can we just ask Mr. McIntosh what you are willing to do in order to cooperate so that we can begin this project? We've heard this outlined, we all know the issue, we've read it and gone over it for a number of years. I just want to ask. Are you, what are you willing to do?
Can you come up and speak to the microphone? I didn't hear what you said. So you refuse to comment on what you would do to cooperate?
Yeah, I think Mr. Mayor is obviously refusing to comment, so you'll just have to make whatever decision in, in light of what you've heard.
If we can't get the comment on the right-of-entry, we can't do A, let alone the more protective B, can we?
Well, I think it's the issue of the right-of-entries for a fish diversion pipe. I'm assuming the properties do be reasonable related to that, although more if it's a legal question, because I believe we can work in the creek without that.
You're going to have to go over that one more time. Are you, go ahead.
So the right-of-entry would make it easier for the fish diversion pipe. It'd be the same right-of-entry as executed before. We would think that that wouldn't be that unreasonable. However, if the property owner decided not to pursue that, my understanding is we would have permission to work within the creek, just because it's in the creek right away, even though technically maybe it might be a portion of his property for the pipe. At least, that's my understanding, although that'd be something legal counsel would have to verify.
See if I can understand. If the, if Mr. McIntosh doesn't give any permission whatsoever, we can still trigger option A.
That, that would be my understanding.
And however, B and C would be, B would be off the table without...
Yes.
Yes. C, however, would be on the table, however, we can't do that in one year because it's...
Yes, that, it'd be impossible to start this year, and who knows how long the permitting and whatever it would take for next year, because you have a short window by which you could work in the creek.
Mark Bell, 63, Domingo, and I'm not going to clarify anything, it's pretty confusing to me. As far as funding options, if we were to go ahead with B, because it seems like A would be a temporary fix, since you have water shooting out of this pipe? You got half a fix? It's a permanent fix?
Yes. Stabilization, that's what you have. You have your permanent banks.
Well, if you have bank stabilization, but you still have water shooting in, onto the bank, is it still going to be stable? I mean, I, I mean, I look at, you know, you know, creek and the, and the culvert from 1932 that's undersized, that was, you know, prescribed by a genius, you know, so the water really comes pumping out of that, and it sounds like this pipe is a lot smaller, so I would assume that the force is a lot greater. The other thing is, as far as funds, can we get some of the money that we're paying in, was it property taxes, to Region 9, whatever that is, for the flood zone?
We've reached out in conversation, and no.
Oh, nice. Guess it's a good thing Farhads now, it's smart, where you can do more damage. And then the other thing is that if I was like a homeowner in that area, and I was hearing like no cooperation coming forth from, from Michael McIntosh, I'd just go, "Hey dudes, class action suit." Okay, that's it, thanks.
Can I just say about Warren?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that we were actually in the very same spot last year, and that really scares me a lot. I also want to say that CSW did, they, everybody had to renew the, or look at the idea of keeping the undersized outfall and going ahead with the bank stabilization. It's, it's more than a bank stabilization, it's that, the energy dissipation channel with the root wad, and, you know, so it does do that part, it's more than just the stabilization. Seems like there was one more thing I wanted to say, and I can't think what it was.
But just to clarify, this whole idea, this whole project began as a flood control project on the Bell Avenue neighborhood. The only reason you're standing here is because in 2000X, at the beginning of the last decade, this project did not go forward. Had it gone forward, we wouldn't know you.
Right, right, but, but...
Or wasn't completed.
But that agency study was talking about the FEMA money being, because the pipe was damaged in the flood, it broke off. So I know that it keeps coming back to being talked about, the Bell Avenue neighborhood, but I'm just confused why the damage done from the flood isn't also an important component.
Well, the detail that you're missing here is, there was a 24-inch extension, which is what you're referring to, just for the people who are listening outside of you and me right here, that came off of that and then brought that water down past your bank, down to more of the creek level, and that got torn off in the '05, '06 flood. And this FEMA project with the larger pipe that serves the 100 houses that flood was stopped before the '05, '06 flood, so that, the reason why it's still on their books is because it's not complete, it's that last 20 feet of it is not done, and that last 20 feet of it includes what happens to that water once it gets to the creek, and, you know, to try to absorb the impact of the water moving down into the creek, which is what that angled pipe that was tacked on, kind of floating through the air, and then the bottom was tacked on to some concrete footing that's not there anymore. That, that was kind of an unorthodox thing that somebody cobbled together a while back, and, you know, FEMA's not saying that that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, what do you call it, Yankee ingenuity part of me, you know, just says, "Well, just take a piece of pipe and stick it back on," you know, it worked for, you know, however many decades. But unfortunately, we're a public, you know, we, we have to, you know, go by the, the public, you know, the best practices at this point, and, you know. And so we're stuck doing it, you know, by the book, by the rules, which is a good thing, you know, I mean, it's, engineers have studied these things, and they, you know, so that's a good thing, but, yeah, so, I don't want to go on too long, but you understand, no.
You're on. Oh, the light's on.
Yeah, Larry, maybe you can give her...
This keeps happening over here. I can turn mine off, maybe...
If you turn it off, it's...
Oh, okay. It's still not working.
Use the switch.
You know, again, I just, I have to interrupt, only because it seems to me that, you know, if I, if, if we were a new council here, and we had to start from today, we will continue this forever, it seems to me, unless we can say, "Tonight, we need to make a decision because we need to save your house and the 100 other people who are flooding." What would you like to see happen? If you could be very, very clear, concrete about what you would like to see council decide, and then we can, we can strongly request a response from Mr. McIntosh so that we can move on this, because you know how time goes. It worries you that this conversation happened last year, but it seems to me it's been happening for eight years. So I, I would, I would really like to be clear when I leave here tonight, because it's an extraordinary amount of time being taken, and there are an extraordinary number of wonderful and, and also challenging things going on that I'd like to start to take a look at.
If I thought that it was possible to do B and do it this year, I would recommend B, but I just don't think it is, and I just think it's setting up a lot more stress and, and roller coaster, and, and I don't think we'll get there. I really, I really don't. We didn't get there last year, I don't think we'll get there. get there last year. I don't think we'll get there. Why, just honestly, why don't I think we'll get there? Because I think Michael's really scared of what might happen to his bridge, and then his property wouldn't be able to get to his property. And I, that's...
Four, three insurance policies. Bridge falls down, insurance policy.
How long does the insurance policy insure the bridge?
Oh, good heavens.
No, I think that will come up. These are the reasons why I'm...
Yes, these are the technical reasons.
These are the reasons I'm worried about being, me being subject to this, that this big agreement that has to happen that didn't happen last year. That's why I'm asking you to buy for K.
And I'm telling you that you, you live in a town which lives on a budget that is like, everybody knows where every nickel and paperclip is. That's how tight things are around here. And the thought of having to go in and do this twice, maybe not twice the money, but anywhere near that, is just mind-boggling, when we have no money to spend on, fill in the blank. So to me, I'd like to just roll the dice on B. And frankly, if your, if your neighbor stands in the way of this, look across the creek and say, you know, the town stepped up. The town was willing to put up to $320,000 into this project. God knows where we're gonna get it from. And somebody's gotta commit to the benefit of all. And frankly, the community is committing to the benefit of all by putting its hard-earned tax dollars, seriously hard-earned, personal dollars that people commit to this town from their paychecks every single year. And we're turning, and we're turning to a property owner and saying, you want to be at least as generous as we are. And we will take every precaution, insurance policies, good engineering practices, hiring quality folks to do the work, not skimping. But you, your neighbor, has to take that proverbial leap into the promise of a better life, both for you, the folks in the Bell Avenue neighborhood who are being consistently flooded until it's done.
And why aren't they here? I'm just, I don't understand why they don't come and they don't boycott. So I'm here because there's an immediate need and I'm concerned, but they don't come. They never have.
I'll tell you what. Go out, campaign every year, or every two years. And you know what? When you walk up and down those streets, they'll talk to you. They'll tell you what's going on.
I'd be happy to talk to them.
The question is not whether people come to the chamber to, to voice their concerns and, and aspirations. They speak to us all the time. There's not a council member that I've ever known can go downtown and get from one side to the other without being stopped a couple of times to talk about an issue, and to take phone calls and emails and things like that. So I can tell you that over the seven-plus years that I've been sitting here, I have fielded gazillions of phone calls. And during my campaigns throughout there, and I walk up and down those streets, they speak about that endlessly. It was nice that we were able to pave their streets, but it was paving and flooding. So the fact that they're not here physically present, many things, is of no consequence.
Okay. I know there was some talk that perhaps the larger pipe had actually helped the situation, even though the outfall was still undersized.
I, I think it, there has been better, better. But you know what? When you're flooded, better is, yeah, so...
And that'll be like me. If we get, if we get down this path and B didn't work, then it's another year.
I know.
And here I am again.
You see, but the whole thing is...
And, and that hole's bigger than it, it's a lot bigger than it was last year.
You're right. But you know what?
And it was a light rain year.
There are three people, three entities in this room. Him, you, and us. Two of us are kind of on the same page.
I mean, I don't know what to say. I don't, I don't want to threaten litigation. I mean, I don't want to go there, but, you know...
It's a frustrating place to be in.
But, I mean, at some point, what am I gonna do, right? And that, that doesn't help anybody. So I don't know what, I guess there's nothing more I can really say right now.
I mean, that's, of course, what's going through my head, too. And, you know, there's a certain, I mean, I don't like going to litigation at all, myself. And there's, I always try to appeal to people as humans, as community members, as, you know, good moral people who do the right thing. They see how it is, and they do the right thing. You know, I like to think that there is that ability in anybody. And, and I think that that is possible. I mean, it, it's possible that sometimes somebody's mad over something that's taken a long time to get over. I try not to hang on to stuff. Some people have a harder time getting to that place. I, I, I like to think that I could appeal to that in you, Michael. I mean, I, I, I think that you truly care what people think about you and how you stand in the community. I think you like to be liked as a person. You know, yeah, unless there's a different, I mean, what goes through my head is, maybe there's a different endgame. You know, maybe you're trying to get us to buy you a new bridge, you know. Frankly, if we bought you a new bridge, it would be a gift to public funds. They put everybody up here in jail. It's, because it's the wrong thing to do. We can't use the public's money to give you a bridge onto your property. When that came up before, as, as, you know, that's basically the conclusion we came to. But the right thing to do right here is to do the right thing for your community. You really do need to do the right thing for your community. And it's not by seeing how much government money you can waste, because that's your community's money. And when I said that it hasn't been itemized, Wendy itemized a number of engineering costs that were there. There's also a phenomenal amount of staff time and legal time and all kinds of stuff. And I don't really want to go there, and I guess I shouldn't go there. I'm being signaled by our council, but it's not a game. This is the public's money. And we need to do the right thing for the 100 houses that flood, for your house that's being threatened by the creek. And it's actually the right thing for you, Michael. I think by doing the right thing for the community, people will stand behind you, too. What comes around goes around.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, oh, one is probably, should close the public comment, but more importantly, it, it sounds like, if staff may recommend, maybe for the council, it sounds like you're leaning toward a certain option, or would prefer a certain option, I should say, being B. Now, what we would maybe suggest is, there's some things the staff, and actually, town attorney could probably elaborate a little more, is that perhaps, as staff, we could do a little more research in terms of getting it ready and getting proposals from fish relocation, and talking to CSW about narrowing down how long it would take to do the different things. But more importantly, it sounds like you do need some type of legal analysis related to the different issues, related to the different options, and perhaps then that may give you a little more guidance. But I think I'd probably like town attorney to kind of explain that a little better.
Right, thank you.
Possibly, maybe. An option would be to direct staff to generally move in the direction of B. And in the meantime, what we would do is provide, look at all of the various legal issues that are connected with this, provide that advice to you via confidential memo. And depending on what you think of that, there could be perhaps even a fallback position of A. But I think that what you're missing here is some very concrete information that you need in order to make really informed decisions about the speed with which this can be accomplished.
I could just, I, I think that we do need your help and, and guidance, and I think we have to dual-track it, you know, so that both A and B are still in the mix. And we have to move quickly. So as quick as we can move, I don't know if you can get back to us by, by next week. But I, I would like to keep that FEMA money on the table and get this thing done, if we can get it done, if we can get something done. Because I feel for you, Ms. O'Rear. And, you know, I don't want to see you go through another season of anxiety over this. But I guess my demonstrative presentation tonight is a culmination of a lot of frustration. And I do apologize for that. So I, I guess we kick it to the next meeting? If you can, can you get us something by the next meeting? I mean, I...
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's the June 10th meeting, which is on Monday. That would be, that would be tough. But what I, what I would like to see, if, if you're giving the direction to do, you know, some analysis, that the answers would come back to you via confidential memo, that can just be given to you at any point in time. And we could then put this on the next available agenda. Well, it may need a special meeting. And that's what, we just talked about, how many, you know, we might need special meetings and that sort of thing. So...
So it sounds like it'd be a special meeting, like the end of June, sometime around then. But I, I remember we had difficulty with finding the time to do the budget, budget workshop, so I know vacations are in play. And so, you know, we, we would have to figure that schedule out, but...
If we put an RFP out for A, when could that get put out?
A is pretty straightforward. We would just have to obviously modify the documents at a minor level, because that's what we bid out back in August, but you have to bring things current. So that can go out rather, that could happen pretty quick.
And what's our minimum bid time that we've got to allow?
Three, I guess three weeks. I mean, my guess is, based on the other contractor, what they had said is they needed 60 days to do the work. You gotta be out of the creek by October 15th, so you really need to start by October 15th, I mean, August 15th, with the exception of any work outside of the creek could be done after October. I don't know if there's much work outside the creek. So, but that was the parameters we operated under. So what would happen is, you bid it out three weeks, you have to award the bid, there's usually a contractor's kind of staging time, so you'd have to back that all in so it works. So it's, it's possible, but it'll be tight. But that's why the need for different special meetings, and we'll have contracts you'll need to approve.
Well, I gotta tell you, there's, if we're, if we have any chance of doing anything, it seems to me it's, it's A. And I don't know if we put an RFP out for A, a limited scope, whether we can amend, put out a second RFP for another section.
You mean, another section, you mean like the pipe?
Like the pipe.
Well, it gets a little more complicated, because you could bid it out with a bid alternate with the pipe. However you're talking, we'd have to redo plans to set it up, so it is a bid alternate. I don't know how much time that would add. Obviously, they have all that information. It's just a matter of putting it together, and you're putting it in a packet a little different, because you have as a bid alternate. And it'll be more expensive if it's a bid alternate.
For us to do the bid alternate?
No, uh, well, it's more expensive for us, well, the cost for bid alternate, that's, that's not as great as, typically with bid alternates, when contractors bid, it's a little more expensive, because they're not sure if you're gonna award the alternate.
Okay. Okay. So you, if, if we did a bid alternate, you're saying that even if we did a limited scope, it would be even more expensive?
Yeah, sometimes it can be. Again, because they're bidding it for the whole project, but this alternate you take out, so they gotta make sure they're covering their costs on the front end. And so it's just, it's just a little more complicated.
Okay.
November 2013. Yeah, November 1st, you have to be completed. But you have to be out of creek by October 15th, so.
Yes, that all fits.
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me, the only way we can kind of cover all bases would be to do a bid, a bid alternate. But, you know, again, that's an increase in, you know, that's probably gonna cause an increase in, in the cost of the project.
But I don't really see how we can, I, I think it's, that's a gamble worth taking.
Well, it, it covers both bases.
Yeah, it covers, I mean, we have to know.
It covers both bases, you know, so that, it seems to me, you know, maybe that's what we've got to do, because we don't know the end result of our council's research, really, at this point. So, I mean, I don't know how else we could proceed and sort of cover all contingencies here. So maybe, maybe the, the bid alternate is, is what we need to do, and, and maybe, you know, tempers will cool. Who knows?
Go ahead.
Unless I'm misunderstanding something, I, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we would, we would need to pay for this bid alternate before we know whether the property owner is willing to cooperate. Is that true? If we draw up...
You have to pay for the construction. I mean, you have to pay for the specs. So you're gonna pay an engineer to prepare the bid specs.
So the bid specs and the alternate as well?
Yeah, well, they're preparing the bid package.
It's extra, extra drawings.
It's just extra drawings, but you're not...
No, I, I understand, but I, I do think, and I would appeal just to human to human with no history, but like, honestly, there is just open feelings, that we find out, so that we start as community member to community member before we do this and cause the town more expense. I, is that naive? I, I do think that we, we need to have some idea of where we stand. And I understand we're gonna get more information. But I, I would appeal to you. I would be very happy to sit down. I, I would really like to understand so that we can move forward in the best interests of someone who seems to be a friend of yours. So, yeah, I would, I would appeal to that.
See you in a couple of years. We can go over it.
I think that's wrong. I think it's always worth talking. Yes. So, we're giving direction to staff right now to look at the double, with the legal opinion and the...
Go ahead and start preparing bid documents with the alternate, with adding, the alternate part of the bid being the pipe replacement.
Right.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
And then talk about getting special meeting and start working on fish location plan and everything else that's needed for the project. And then, when you get your confidential memo...
Yeah, and based on what we learn, what things cost, then we'll...
Yeah. Oh, and, and if you like, staff can sit down with Mr. McIntosh and talk about the issues more, if you'd like.
That would, that would be good.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna do the alternate bids, right?
Yeah. The A and B.
Right. We're gonna prepare the plans, but we're not gonna bid it out until the special meeting.
Until we understand what we're dealing with, yes.
What can we get done? Because it's getting very late.
Sure. What are you gonna do?
You're right. Thank you. Let's look at this agenda here. Can you press the, press the button? Okay.
In this day and age, I think these microphones are a go. I mean, give the audience a break.
You are right.
Maybe we need a couple more speakers, but maybe you guys should have those little clip-on microphones. But there's a lot that can be done to improve the sound in this building. And so I think maybe you ought to set a few bucks aside and have an expert come out and work it out for you.
Yeah, we've had an expert, actually, lives in the community, he's been trying to tune up what we've got here.
Yeah, and they're all pieces of junk.
Yeah.
You have to lean way over to use his microphone. It's crazy.
Maybe if we didn't have to spend $350,000...
You're the only one I can hear.
Well, you know...
You got a nice big booming voice.
If we didn't have to spend a third of a million dollars on this project, maybe we could.
Sorry about that. Okay. Well, thanks. But...
Actually, we did look into it.
Okay, the next item is...
What do we, what can we complete after 11 o'clock?
Well, let's look at what we've got here. We've got, number 20 is the Marin Telecommunications Agency. First Amendment, that shouldn't take that long.
Can we look at the Streets for People item?
Streets for People, I think we, I have the feeling that'll be pretty quick, too. Administrative purchasing policy, do we need that tonight?
Well, if you don't need a staff report, you can just approve it. Actually, that one's funny, because that's been on the agenda for the last three meetings.
Yeah, I urged him to do this when he first came on board. Can we just approve this thing with a few minutes of conversation?
Okay, well, town clerk vacancy.
We do have to do that, we're under a time constraint.
You have a 60-day window.
Board and committee assignments.
We should wait for-
Well, actually, Barbara has, we might be able to get that-
Great.
Pretty fast. Barbara has sent out things she's interested in, I've talked to her about things she's not interested in, it might go quick. Maybe we can get some of them. Summer schedule of town council meetings.
Should take me a minute.
And the policy for filling vacancies on boards and commissions, that, we could continue that.
So, everything but 26.
Sounds good. Should we make some sausage here?
Yeah, let's do this fast.
Number 20 is basically yours, Larry, is authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment of, to the agreement of formation of the Marin Telecommunications Agency. I know you have some mixed feelings about this, Larry, but-
Would you like a real brief staff report?
Yeah.
Okay, so, in essence, the staff report does give a little more history on formation of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, but really, the best way to describe this is, there's a franchise agreement with Comcast. What's going on is, that's based on the number of subscribers within the community, is how you get your fee. However, for AT&amp;T, which is also a franchise, they're under a state franchise agreement, which says it's based on revenues, and they don't need to give us the information on subscribers, and there's the rub. The current agreement with MTA is based on number of subscribers, and not on the amount of revenue. And so, what's going on, we have to amend the agreement with all the agencies in order to get the franchise fees they're holding back for AT&amp;T, which at this point, probably, and the report said 440, it might be up to 470. Fairfax's share is probably about $7,500, give or take. Fiscal impact really is, if we approve this agreement, then all the cities and towns get their money, as well as the county, we would get ours. And in essence, under the new structure, we get a little less in Comcast fees, but it's made up for in the new AT&amp;T fees. So, in essence, we're made whole, maybe AT&amp;T expanding more, so we might get a little bit more money. Bottom line, though, is council member Bragman has asked us to attach the article from the IJ related to his position on the matter, he probably has a little more information on it. From a staff perspective, all the other towns are saying, hurry up and approve this so we can get our money. They have a lot more in it than we do, so we're recommending approval of the agreement.
Yeah. So, the way I interpret that to mean is that we had a deal with Comcast, the rules of the game changed, there's a bunch of other players, they don't have to play by those rules, and so, this lines up the rules. And the essence of the matter is, I think, from your letter, Larry, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that all the towns basically want to take the money from these agreements and use it in their general funds, and there has been a prior arrangement where Kuwait, where the agency, which is the CMCM, which is providing our video coverage, was being funded through this, and the other towns are not agreeing to that, and they want to use the money in their general fund.
And I think, I think maybe we just do half a loaf tonight. What has happened is, the MTA was, had a private franchise agreement with Comcast about eight years ago. Actually, it was Greg Stepansich that represented the agency. So, we had certain terms and conditions in that agreement, among which were, I think, about a $3.5 million grant to establish a community media center, which we have established, it's on A Street, it's broadcasting us right now, we've got expert camera operator here tonight, Damian Brown, who's done a great job on our meetings. And obviously, it's really helped make our meetings a lot more accessible to a lot more people. And what happened is, about two or three years after that, the legislature passed DIVCA, which is a State Digital Infrastructure Act, which basically said, no longer will we have individual franchise agreements, we're going to have a standard state franchise agreement. AT&amp;T operates under that state franchise agreement. Under the franchise agreement, there's no explicit requirement for them to disclose the number of subscribers, and AT&amp;T, being AT&amp;T, refused to do so. So, we are making this change in the bylaws because of a lack of cooperation of one of our partners, can you imagine that? And we need to do it. We need, we need to pass this amendment. The other agencies, it's a cooperative, it's a joint powers authority, or a joint powers agency, we need to do this. But the larger issue that I'd like to bring back to the council is the issue of the sustainability of the media center, and I think it deserves a, just a more timely and less exhausted presentation than we have time for tonight, so. But that is a critical issue going forward for reasons somewhat unrelated to the current amendment before us. But I would, I would move approval of the amendment. It is going to cost us a little bit of money, but as Garrett mentioned, it's probably going to balance out, we're going to have a little bit of a loss in franchise fees that come to us. But we need to do this. The other agencies are depending on our cooperation to do it. We really don't have much choice but to do it, and I would move approval.
All right. We have motion Bragman, second, Weinsoff. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, and I guess we'll-
Let's note that we would allow the public to speak, but we have no public.
We've driven them off, and it's probably my responsibility. I think I've done that single-handedly tonight, so.
I wouldn't beat yourself up, I think it was a group effort.
Thank you.
Well, there's still public, thanks to CMCM.
We have, we do have-
We are on the internet, and-
We have a virtual public.
And, yes, and who knows, if somebody's really bored staying up late, and they want to see what their public is doing.
Come on, it's-
Here we go. All right, Streets for People, is this the event, is this at the same time as it was last year, Renee?
Streets for People would take place on August 25th, which is the last Sunday in August, similar time, same time to last year, actually. And the structure would be very similar, the partnerships we're hoping to work with would be the same, it would be Sustainable Fairfax, the town, and the Chamber of Commerce. And with a potential participation of the Fair Buck, it sounds like there's a possibility for some grant, micro grant there. So, yeah, a very similar, a very similar event, and the town participated last year, sponsored in kind with covering the cost of police and the public works.
As I call, last year went very well, and-
Great event.
It was a great event, and basically, we were looking for in-kind donation for the, basically, the same deal as last year, police, public works.
I think it's great, great idea.
Going to move?
Yes, I move that the Town of Fairfax act as a sponsor, in-kind donation of the time of the police and public works.
Second. Okay, so, a motion, Goddard, second Bragman, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Number 22, number 22 is DOP Resolution 13-30, establishing an administrative purchasing policy including local preferences for professional services, supplies and materials, public works projects using informal biz process. Do you want to give a brief staff report?
Really quickly, this is something requested by a council member of Weinsoff back in, actually, February, I think. And so, we took a crack at the coming up administrative purchasing policy, in essence, it does wrap in local preference policy within it for professional services, we're saying, give a 10% preference, or $1,500, whichever is less, if you can find someone to offer professional services in town. Purchase of goods, we're saying 1% match, because it's taxable sales, with the exception being if something's less than $5,000, maybe we spend up to 5% more to get someone local. Other services, and that's like janitorial services, things like that, maybe 5% bump for local, up to, unless it's more than $10,000, then we go competitive. And then, for public projects, under $15,000, we try to find somebody local, give a 10% preference, and if that doesn't work, then we go outside the area. The other thing is, there's a green purchasing policy that the Marin Climate and Energy Partnerships coming up with, you can incorporate that in the future, we're doing it by resolution, because it's just easier to change. And the other thing is, we're caught, putting in a resolution is making it clear that the town manager can approve contracts up to $15,000, which I think is a matter of practice, but it wasn't particularly clear, so we're putting in the resolution to clarify that. So, that concludes the staff report.
Very good. Are there any comments from council members, or members of the public, or somebody on staff acting as a member of the public?
If none, then I would move resolution.
I have a comment.
Ah, yes.
I actually raised, I actually raised my hand to get acknowledged, which we're supposed to do under Robert's Rules of Order. And I think it's a good proposal, the only thing I wanted you to add, or would like to see added, is that the council get a monthly or quarterly report of any no, informal bid contracts that you approve. So, maybe a quarterly report so that we can track those.
Sorry, all contracts, or just public?
Just the ones that we're giving you the authority to do informally, the 15,000-
Oh, up to 15,000?
The up to 15,000. The others that are publicly bid are going to come to us.
Okay.
We'll know all about those, it's just for the little guys.
Yeah, it's the little ones that I'd like to keep track of, if you could give us quarterly reports on what your, what contracts are going out, I think that would, you know, improve the transparency of the procedure that we're going to probably put in place here.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem, maybe we'll include it as their monthly financial report.
Sure.
Put it in there.
Sure, whatever, whatever works. So, with that, with that amendment, I would second the friendly amendment, hopefully, I would second your motion.
Excellent idea.
Okay, so, we have a motion, Weinsoff, a second Bragman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And now, we will move on to discuss and consider selection process for the town clerk vacancy. Is there a brief report on this, or?
Yeah, you get the resignation from Ms. Anderson, your town clerk, effective June 1st, you have about 60 days to decide, do you either do a special election, or to appoint someone to the position. Your options are, if you want to appoint, you can create a process like you did for council members, or you just appoint someone. If you just appoint someone, we'd recommend it be a city staff person, maybe the best person would be our deputy town clerk. Main requirement is, you need to live in town, but more importantly, we work pretty closely with the person in that position, helps you have good knowledge about what a town clerk does. Deputy town clerk seems logical in terms of a person who knows what they're doing, opposed to someone that maybe is not familiar with government, or what the clerk's responsibilities are. Or your other option is, you could call a special election, and you could probably do it as part of the general election. Again, though, the same issue would arise of, you don't know if you're going to get someone qualified or not, although you don't necessarily need to be. And it would just run for the remainder of the term, and then it'd be up for election again in 2015.
Can I ask a question? So, in general practice, is that person the same person, the town clerk and the deputy? Because that's what Judy was for quite some time.
Right. In this community, as far as anyone can recall, usually, the town clerk happened to also be a town employee.
But in other municipalities?
In other municipalities, my experience is, it has been that way, it's just a function of how it's worked, but there are cases where there's a separate town clerk, but what I've found, what I've seen, is usually the town clerk is someone who's retired, who used to be a town employee, or a city employee. And then, they come in and do some of the things, but most of the heavy lifting they would give to the deputy town clerk, because they're just coming in and signing resolutions. They might help to put some election stuff together if you're dedicated, but most of the time, they have other things to do.
And he's put his finger exactly on the issue, is that we are about to embark on a very interesting campaign with four folks. This is not exactly the time to have on-the-job training. And I know that you've been digging into this process with Judy's assistance, and it's going to be extremely challenging to get it all correctly done.
Well, I would absolutely move to appoint Michelle Gardner to the role of town clerk.
And I would gladly second that.
I would, too, I don't think it's on the agenda tonight.
It's not, yeah, that's, we need to-
So, it's going to happen.
Oh, it's not.
It's just, you give staff direction to-
Don't be offended by that.
Yeah, if you give us direction, we'll put it on.
We'll put it on.
Let's put it on, let's put it on our next agenda.
Yeah, let's put it on the next agenda, and so, we'll-
So, we can actually comply with the Brown Act.
Michelle's excited about it, she can ready to get started.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do that.
So, there we go. You view council board committee assignments. Ready to do this?
Are we doing it for all of us, or just for them? We have our assignments.
We have ours, we have a list of, what are they, 10 or 11, they're vacancies right now because of Pam and Ryan's retirement, or getting free, or get out of jail free, or whatever this is.
Well, there's not really, because Major I was happy to take on directly.
Okay.
And the youth commission liaison is something we've discussed about folding into focus.
Although, I do think there still needs to be a liaison in the folding.
Which should be you.
Well, this is what I actually wanted to ask, is, in doing this, I, one of the, one of the options is that we just fill in the blank spots. The other, and what I was thinking and hoping, and it seems as though Barbara did the same thing in her letter to us, was that we look, at least for me, I would love to be able to be effective in whatever it is that I join, and that might mean in a short appointment, that it be something that I have some background in. So, I wrote some things that I think I could be most useful in, and then, it may require some shuffling around in terms of placements, and I don't know who's amenable to that and who's not. So, I would really like to have a spot on the Zero Waste Committee.
Yours.
No, no, no. I would, I would like to step into the role as the liaison to the Ross Valley School Board, the youth commission liaison. And I would be open to checking out the Transportation Authority of Marin. I, yeah, there's a lot to learn in that. That would be, yeah, new, but it's in my-
As an alternate.
It's in my, you know, my area of interest.
And, so, I'm currently the alternate, and I actually was our representative there for a few years, or at least a couple years, so, I'd be willing to hand off my position as alternate to you, so you could kind of segue in.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, if that would satisfy that-
I think that's a good way to do it.
Part of your ambition, I'd be happy to do that, okay?
Right. And then, also, I didn't mention saferit's to schools, as I've attended those task force meetings for 10 years.
Yeah, and I actually have already got you to attend one, where I'm the rep for that right now. And I think, especially considering how old your kids are compared to mine in college, so, makes sense.
Good. Well, somebody's got to get it right here. John, there's one on the Marin Telecommunications Agency, I'm not going to be here for the next meeting, which is an important meeting. And I would like you to be my alternate on that, if possible. I talked to Barbara about it, but-
Yeah, because she did indicate that.
Given the timing, it's going to be next Wednesday, and I would feel most comfortable if you served as alternate, so that you could attend that meeting.
Is it always the second Wednesday?
It's the second Wednesday.
Because that's when the fire board meets.
Do you have a meeting next week?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
We do.
And follows up at 6:30 at the same time with the Good Earth meeting, same time.
Well, okay.
When does that meet?
I'm your, and I'm, I'm your alternate on the fire board.
Yes.
So, I, do you, can-
Are you out of town?
I'm out of town. I usually cover the-
I'm out of town, I usually cover those meetings.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we need somebody that can advocate for the community media center, that can slip into that next meeting. So.
Actually, you're not the alternate.
No, I am.
No?
Yeah, remember, I was appointed when Ryan stepped down.
So that wasn't just like a one-hit wonder? That was the thing?
Yeah, because I was going to be out of town.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying I claim ownership of it, so I mean, I'm really, you know, I'm flexible, because I've got conflicts on, I've got a conflict with Marin Energy Authority and the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, so I need an alternate on MEA, so I was thinking it would be good for Barbara to step into.
To MEA?
MEA alternate, and, you know, so I, she could kind of segue maybe into taking that agency on, because I would like to stick with the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority.
Sure.
And then the Tree Committee, I took over as our representative on the Tree Committee.
From Ryan?
From Ryan, I was, I was our rep on that for eight years.
Yeah, and then you went back.
And then I went back when Ryan stepped down, so I'd like to, are you interested in that?
What did Cola take, what's Barbara Cola taken?
I don't know.
Do we have her letter?
She, her, she indicated her interests were Affordable Housing Committee, Community Development Block Grants, I wrote her down perhaps on some things, MEA alternate, Measure I oversight alternate, Marin Telecommunications Agency alternate, Ross Valley Fire alternate, and that's what she indicated.
Do, do we know if she's going to be back by next week?
Yeah.
So we need, we need an alternate to appear, so, I mean, I would, I'd be fine, you've got a conflict every month, so, unfortunately, but I mean, Barbara, Barbara will be great, so, I mean, I would, I'd be happy to, to move her.
So are we divvying these all up, the remaining, what do you think?
I need an alternate on MEA, I need an alternate on MTA, and I need an alternate on the Tree Committee.
She said that she was, Barbara said she wanted to be the MEA alternate.
Okay.
I can do the Tree Committee.
Great, great.
So she wants to be the MTA alternate and the Ross Valley Fire alternate, and the Community Development Block Grant Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, so she's sort of, what are we missing?
Well, the fact that some of those meet on the same evening. MTA and the Fire Board.
How many Fire Board meetings is she going to have to go to? I mean, you're the alternate.
I'm the alternate.
Larry's the alternate.
Right, so what's the big problem?
Yeah.
There's no problem.
There's no problem.
There's no problem.
Oh, good, good, good.
But I would, you know, if she's interested in MEA, MTA alternate, great, if Renee's interested in Tree Committee alternate, or do you want to take it on?
Or you're willing to?
It's, you know what, it's a, it's a really interesting thing to do.
Yeah, you get out and.
You get out, you're going to see the town, it's a great place for you.
I will take the Tree Committee.
Okay, and then I would, I would swap as alternate.
So everything's taken, I took Measure I, we're good. There is one on here Larry, you and I can probably whack off of our list, I don't think the Ross Valley Sanitary Consolidation Feasibility Studies.
It's over, that's over.
It's over.
That's done with.
So Michelle, take that off the Bragman-Weinsdorf list.
That one's done, that one's done, that's, that's over.
Okay, so, real quick, so Affordable Housing Committee, you have Councilmember Kohler would be on that, and then Chita Slo, no one said anything on that, Community Development Block Grant, that'd be Councilmember Kohler, Marin Energy Authority alternate, Councilmember Kohler, Measure I, that doesn't need to happen, Zero Waste Committee, it's Councilmember Goddard, Marin Telecommunication Agency alternate would be the mayor?
No, it would be Barbara.
Would be Barbara, okay. Be Barbara, and the Ross, oh, well, you're already the alternate, Ross Valley School Board Liaison, that's Councilmember Goddard, Tree Committee, Councilmember Goddard, and Youth Commission Liaison, Councilmember Goddard, is that correct?
And I took Measure I.
Oh, and you took Measure I, that's correct.
And saferds to schools.
All right, and then you switch to, say throughout to schools, and the TAM alternate.
TAM alternate.
Okay, got it.
And one other thing on your little list there, Michelle, see what it says on my thing, MCCMC Ledge Committee Representative, three-eleven-tam, you take the date off, that was the date that I started.
Okay, so we've got nobody on Chita Slo.
Chita.
Chita Slo, well, you know how to pronounce it.
How often does it meet?
I'll do it.
I'll do it, I asked for, you want it?
No, it's yours. No, go right ahead, I mean, if nobody was going to volunteer, I don't want to let it go foul, but no, 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 go right ahead.
You sure?
You've got more on your plate.
I don't care, I mean, you have a bigger list, so I don't want to be, you know.
Well, I don't want to be greedy.
I don't, I don't want to be overbear. Overcome so easily.
Who's, yeah, who wants Chita Slo? I don't think they meet very often.
They don't?
I would like, I would like to try it.
I've been getting some emails from them, but they're meeting in Turkey right now.
I'd like to try.
So I decided not to.
Well, Barbara Kate now is, is on it, so you may be meeting twice a week.
Yep.
Could be.
On television, I remember if you want.
That's a good clip.
Why don't you, why don't you take it?
Really, I don't care, I just didn't want to let it go unattended, but if you, if you really want it.
Here.
Heads are snails.
I'll take it, you'll be my alternate, okay?
There you go, okay.
All right, so Larry with David is the alternate. We got it, right?
Yeah.
Summer schedule, council meetings, we've talked about this once already, and we're not all here right now, is August?
August seventh is still the best date for me.
July, we pushed on the twenty-fifth, we're going to have to add some extra ones in, we don't know when those are going to be.
Well, hang on a nap, we're going to have to check calendars.
I don't know, no change?
No, I mean, my, I'm not going to be here from the twelfth to the twenty-eighth of June, so just for quorum purposes, you need to just note that for your records.
Yeah, but that's basically, yeah, we're looking at some must, you know, get some contracts through at that point.
You guys are going to have to do it.
And I believe I know how you stand on that particular contract.
Well, I'm, I want to do whatever works for us, so.
Well, yeah, we just need to move forward in a way that helps the community.
Okay, we're done.
Sounds good, and we're continuing the process of filling vacancies on boards and commissions.
So I would, I'd move to.
The council assumes.
Second.
Okay, motion Bragman, second, Weinsdorf?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
We're done.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, everybody.